All right. I want to call the Patent Township Board of Supervisors meeting May 14, 2025 to order. As you are all able, please stand for the saying of our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we pledge allegiance to our Pennsylvania flag, too?
Uh, I don't.
Just the American flag, got it.
I don't know.
All right. Thank you all for being here. I know some of you had no choice to be here, but any...
Oh, you have to disconnect the audio.
No, she couldn't do it.
She did, but it's still...
No, I have to turn it off here.
All right, can I talk? All right. So, we want to welcome all, especially new Patent Township residents, to Patent Township Community, which we like to refer to as a place of all, and we'd like to enact that as well. Any additions to the posted agenda? Seeing none, moving on. Public comments, so residents and taxpayers may address the board on any issues of interest to the township, comments related to specific items. We just ask that you wait until that comes up on the agenda. But at this time, any public comments? All right. So come up, just state your name and locale and...
Hi, I'm Valerie Burnett, and I live in Patent Township, and I just wanted to compliment Public Works Road Crew. I know that we've been hit hard with storms lately, and I live in Top Trees and right along the Balfont Central Rail Trail. I have to say, the improvements that have gone on there have been dramatic and greatly appreciated by so many people that use that trail, whether it's for birding, walking, biking, you name it. It's a transportation line for people, too. There were so... People come in from all over to use that trail also. We met... I met some people from Philadelphia, and they started grumping about a tree that was down, and I said, "Oh, you know, there are people still without power right now, and I have the utmost confidence the Patent Township Road Crew is going to come in here and take care of this as soon as they are able to." And they were like, "Oh, so there are bigger fish to fry right now." I was like, "Yep, but they're going to get to it," and by golly gee, they did. And so I just wanted to say thank you so much, congratulations, and I thought it was very fitting that it's celebrating Health Week coming up here and Public Works Week. Proclamations are going to be coming up, and I thought, well, that was rather fitting for all the work that's being done on the trail. So, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Yeah. That's amazing.
Yeah. Thank you for coming out, taking the time to actually come out and express that gratitude and appreciation. We know that, you know, work is still in progress, you know, cleaning up, you know, after that storm, and I think, you know, our Public Works workers, as well as first responders, they just, you know, go above and beyond in serving the residents here, you know, and beyond, and so thank you for that appreciation, and we'll definitely be passing that along. So... All right. Any other public comments at this time? All right. Seeing none. We'll move on to presentations of some of the proclamations. We have a lot of proclamations. I will warn, we're not going to read all of them, even though they're all important, but we do have some individuals here to accept some of these proclamations, so we'll make sure to read those, you know, specifically. So, I will first entertain the motion, the first motion in our agenda.
So moved.
So that's for Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month?
Yes.
Yes.
And we have representatives from Apida here this evening.
Should take the motion and then read it? Okay. You're a second?
Second.
All right. All right. So, a proclamation honoring Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. So whereas in 1992, Congress designated May as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month in the United States to celebrate the significant contributions of people of Asian and Pacific Islander heritage to the growth, history, culture, and achievements of our nation. And whereas the Federal Asian Pacific American Council has chosen the theme for the May 2025 Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month to be a legacy of leadership and resilience, and whereas we are blessed to have residents of Patent Township who themselves, or their families, hail originally from the many diverse countries on the Asian continent and the Pacific Islands, some are recent immigrants, while others are first, second, third, fourth, or fifth generation Americans. And whereas people of Asian, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander origin constitute approximately 12.4% of the population in Patent Township, they have enriched the ethnic and social fabric of our community with their diverse languages, cultures, and religious traditions. And whereas those of Asian, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander origin contribute to and enrich our community with their leadership, creativity, talent, enterprise, and skill in our integral part of building and supporting a vibrant and resilient economy in Patent Township. And whereas the Asian Pacific Islander Desi-American Apida community of Patent Township are our beloved friends and family, our cherished neighbors, and valued members of Patent Township, where we remain committed to embracing and accepting all our residents from diverse backgrounds and standing against systemic racism, xenophobia, misogyny directed toward them both in the past and in the present time. And whereas on April 12, 2025, the Center County community gathered at the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Plaza in downtown State College for the Third Annual Apida Festival with a event, a spring event, what, hold on. Festival with a...
Spring.
Spring festival theme to commemorate A A N H P I Heritage Month. The vibrant and uplifting event was a town and gown event organized by Penn State Apida Caucus in collaboration with Panapida Circle Community Group, Penn State's Paul Robeson Cultural Center, and the Borough of State College. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Patent Township Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim May 2025 to be Asian American Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Patent Township, and encourage all residents to celebrate the history and culture of Asian Pacific Islanders and Asian Pacific Americans and their legacy of leadership and resilience and vital contributions to our community, our state, and our country. Proclaim this 14th day of May 2025. So there... There's a motion on the floor, second it. Any discussion? All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Do we want someone to accept this?
Yes. Malini is here.
All right.
Yes. We'll do that after she...
Good evening. My name's Malini Krishan Kitya. I'm a resident of State College, and I'm also a State College Borough Council member. I'm one of the co-founders of the local Panapida Circle Community Group, where Apida stands for Asian Pacific Islander Desi-American. I want to express my thanks to all of you, the Board of Supervisors, as well as staff, for issuing this proclamation. It gives us an opportunity to reflect on and celebrate the important role that Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders have played in our shared history. And as was mentioned, the theme for this year's Heritage Month is a legacy of leadership and resilience. And in the words of the Council, the Federal Asian Pacific American Council, this is an opportunity to pay tribute to pioneers who often faced insurmountable barriers and then demonstrated not only exceptional leadership, but risked much to usher in change. Their stories of perseverance, of overcoming doubt, discrimination, and the weight of societal expectations serve as inspiring reminders that resilience is a cornerstone of our community. Each breakthrough they achieved has laid the groundwork for those who follow, encouraging the next generation to dream boldly. And so what I would like to do is to share a few examples of these pioneers from the Apida community who have shaped our collective experience and defined what it means to be American today. Wong Kim Ark, born in San Francisco, California in 1870, who sued the federal government when he was denied re-entry on the grounds that he could not be a citizen. The Supreme Court's seminal decision in this case on March 28, 1898, was that citizenship could not be denied to anyone born in the United States. This case is the foundation of birthright citizenship even today. Lieutenant Susan Ann Cuddy, born in Los Angeles in 1915, prevailed against anti-Asian sentiments during World War II to become the first Korean-American woman in the U.S. military, and later the first female Navy gunnery officer. Congressman Dalib Singh Sound, who came from India in 1920 as a graduate student to study mathematics at Berkeley, then became a farmer, as no one would hire an Asian as a professor. He then successfully lobbied to end restrictions to citizenship for Indian and Filipino immigrants, became a citizen, was elected judge, and eventually became the first person of Asian descent, and he was also of the Sikh religion, elected to Congress in 1957, and he was a big supporter of civil rights for all Americans. Congresswoman Patsy Mink, a lawyer who was born in Hawaii, combated sexism and racism to become the first Asian American woman elected to Congress in 1965. She advocated for Asian Americans, women, and children, even when it was at a potential risk to her political career. Former Secretary of Transportation Norman Mineta overcame racial injustice as a child of Japanese immigrants in World War II internment camp to serve in the U.S. Army, Congress, and then the cabinets of Presidents Bill Clinton and George W. Bush. These are just, you know, few examples, but I also just want to highlight Apida leaders in other fields. Ohio-born architect Maya Lin, who designed both the Vietnam Memorial and the Civil Rights Memorial. Indian-American Kalpana Chawla, first South Asian American to go to space, South American, yes, to go, a woman to go to space, who came here as a graduate student in aerospace engineering, and then who later died in the Columbia disaster. Bangladesh-born Muslim American graduate student Fazlou Rahman Khan, who discovered the technology to build tall buildings and is called the father of modern skyscrapers. So these are just a few examples, but if you use any technology, many of our common American experiences, right? Web-based email that was based on Hotmail, YouTube, Yahoo, N95 masks, and so many other technologies were also invented by Asian Americans. Now, in Patent Township, we know about 12% of our community is Apida, about 7% of Center County residents, and these members continue to contribute both locally and globally. Recently, I attended a celebration for Penn State Professor Jai Indrajain, who got the Wolf Prize in Physics, and many who get the Wolf Prize go on to get the Nobel Prize. I thank you again for this proclamation and urge everyone in our Patent Township and Center County communities to use this month to learn about and celebrate the many hidden stories about local and national members of our community, both from the past and the present. This is our common history, part of the rich diversity of our nation. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Valerie. Oh, Malini.
Malini.
I'm sorry. I'm more of a... Did you bring this for everybody?
Yes. Right down there.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right. Moving on, proclamation celebrating Mount Nittany Health Week. Yeah, let me entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second it. All right. Let me get that read.
So, proclamation proclaiming May 11 to 17 as Mount Nittany Health Week, whereas the week of May 11 to 17, 2025, is recognized as National Hospital Week, a time to celebrate the vital contributions of hospitals, health systems, and healthcare workers to our communities. Whereas Mount Nittany Health, with its 2,500 employees, including more than 220 providers, has provided more than 120 years of service and outstanding healthcare to our region. And whereas the Mount Nittany Health team is a trusted partner in bringing compassionate, expert care in serving the healthcare needs of our families, neighbors, and friends, and whereas Mount Nittany Health welcomes all patients, visitors, staff, providers, students, and volunteers without exception, embracing the values of teamwork and respect. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Patent Township Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim May 11 to 17, 2025, as Mount Nittany Health Week, and commends the board leadership and entire Mount Nittany Health team for its record of service to the region. Proclaim this 14th day of May 2025.
We have representative from Mount Nittany here.
Hello, thank you. I'm Drew Brungardt. I'm the Director of Human Resources at Mount Nittany Health, and I do want to thank our Patent Township Commissioners for your continued support of Mount Nittany Health. We do truly value our partnership and our shared commitment to the well-being of this community. We are deeply honored that you are recognizing Mount Nittany Health Week, a meaningful celebration of our team's dedication and compassion. This is a very special week for our health system because it recognizes our now more than 2,650 employees who are committed to providing high-quality compassionate care to the Center Region. National Hospital Week was first observed in 1953. It is the time to celebrate hospitals and more than the 7 million individuals who support patient care across the nation. Locally, Mount Nittany Health Week shines a light on our own incredible team. An independent, community-governed health system, Mount Nittany Health, has proudly served our region since 1902, adapting, growing, and innovating to meet the evolving needs of our neighbors. Looking ahead, we're excited to the construction of our new 10-story patient tower, an investment that will truly transform care in our region when it opens in 2026. Mount Nittany Health has also been working on several other key, exciting projects, including renovating Mount Nittany Health's Pediatrics Office in Bollesburg, and last year, we opened Mount Nittany Health Express Care in the Hills Plaza here in State College, and our new location, Mount Nittany Health Top Trees, where we actually celebrated Mount Nittany Health Week on Tuesday, and are celebrating at the Medical Center today and tomorrow. Again, on behalf of Mount Nittany Health, I want to thank you, and thank you for honoring the dedication of our more than 2,650 employees who serve with compassion and excellence every day. Appreciate it.
All right. There's a motion on the table to approve this proclamation that's been seconded it. Any discussions, comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Hold on. All right. I swear these last proclamations, these people are very important to us, just because we're not going to read them all, just trying to move this meeting along. So, for the next proclamation, I'll entertain a motion to approve proclamation proclaiming May 11 to the 17th as Police Officers Week.
So moved.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor. Comments? Entertain those. Supervisor, Rob.
I just want to say to chief and to all our officers who continue to be outstanding throughout our community and assisting other municipalities, please extend our board's appreciation for everything they do. Every time we sit here at a meeting, we hear outstanding reports about our officers. So, thank you, and thank our officers for an outstanding job. Thank you.
Any other comments? Questions? Chief, you know how I feel about our officers, our law enforcement, and, you know, people always have often come to me and, you know, seen me as being a pro-police, and obviously I'm pro-police, and I always like to add on there, I'm pro very good policing, and I know that is something that, you know, our Township embodies and our staff, and obviously under your leadership. And so, yeah, I'm continually sort of like grateful just for how y'all embody, you know, what good public service and policing sort of like is, so just thanks for that. Question, what's this tank out here? What is this?
Oh, yeah. I apologize. We didn't realize that somebody parked it right there. So, that is for the safety fair, this Saturday, for a display of the safety fair.
I thought I was going to get to drive it home.
Might be a rage act.
All right. Okay. There's a motion on the floor. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Moving on, I will entertain a motion to proclaim May 18 to 24th as Public Works Week.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. All right. Moving on, contribution to Juneteenth celebration.
So we have our friend, Mr. Terry Watson, here to talk to us about Juneteenth, and he has a presentation to our police of chief, or chief of police as well, that he's going to make. It pains me greatly.
What a pleasure to be here for Police Officer Week, too. I'm going to first, I'm doing double duty tonight. I'm doing the center gives, and I'm doing a messy activity for three dollars there for my outfit today, so just want to put that there. So, again, I'm Terry Watson, and before I talk about Juneteenth, if you'll allow me to backtrack this a little bit on the police piece, yeah. So, this year, we had our first S F J community bowling event, which involved a competition between police and community members. Patent Township Police was represented, State College Police represented, and I am happy to say that bragging rights for the whole year goes to Chief Tyler Yawley. The ongoing joke was that, yeah, he's not going to let this down. He won, he won the whole, we had about, I think, about 14 to 16 people show up for the bowling event, and so it was really nice, and we had some wings, some pizza, some good laughs, and some good times, so definitely thank you for, first of all, thank you both Amy and Tyler for both showing up to that event. I think it was, it shows the community that, you know, beyond the duty of policing, that there's a community component that is also important. All right, now on the Juneteenth, thank you for that moment. So, good evening, everyone. I'm honored to stand before you today as a representative of the Juneteenth Committee, as well as a Patent Township resident. And as we look ahead of this year's Juneteenth celebration centered around a powerful theme of our freedom, our fight, our future, we are asking the Patent Township to continue to sponsor this event, but this year with $500 and for, and with representation. Why Juneteenth? Well, because it's more than just a historical milestone, it is living memory of the work we must continue together. It celebrates the end of slavery in our country, and it also challenges us to recognize the ongoing struggles for equality, dignity, and justice in every community, including our own. Our freedom reminds us that freedom is not fully realized until it is shared by all. Our fight speaks to the generations who have pushed forward in the face of injustice, and our future calls us to take action and to build a community where opportunity, safety, and respect are aspirational as well as expectations. So by sponsoring this celebration this year isn't just a gesture this year, it's a reflection of Patent Township's values, it's our way of affirming that we recognize that diversity strengthens us, that history informs us, and that unity propels us. So, with that said, I want to ask the Patent Township to continue to proudly support this Juneteenth celebration, not just with words, but with a presence, and to show that we are going to be unwavering commitment to be a better and a more inclusive future for all. So, again, the event is going to take place on June 13, starting with our art gallery exhibition, and it's going to feature local and national artists, and then we are going to have our...
I just want to say to Chief and to all our officers who continue to be outstanding throughout our community and assisting other municipalities, please extend our board appreciation for everything they do. Every time we sit here at a meeting, we hear outstanding reports about our officers. So thank you and thank our officers for an outstanding job. Thank you.
Any other comments? Questions? Chief, you know how I feel about our officers, our law enforcement, and you know, people always have often come to me and, you know, seen me as being a pro-police, and obviously I'm pro-police, and I always like to add on there, I'm pro very good policing, and I know that is something that, you know, our township embodies and our staff and obviously under your leadership. And so, yeah, I'm continually sort of like grateful just for how y'all embody, you know, what good public service and policing sort of like is, so just thanks for that. Question, what's this tank out here? What is this?
Oh, yeah, I apologize. We didn't realize that somebody parked it right there. So that is for the safety fair.
Okay.
This Saturday. For a display of the safety.
I thought I was going to get to drive it home.
Might be a rage act.
All right. Okay, there's a motion on the floor. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Moving on, I will entertain a motion to proclaim May 18th to 24th as Public Works Week.
Second.
Any discussion? Think we already had our preview of gratitude for public works by one of our residents. All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Where are we at? There's a lot here. Okay. I'll entertain a motion proclaiming May 18th to 24th as Emergency Medical Services Week.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. All right. Moving on, contribution to Juneteenth celebration.
So we have our friend, Mr. Terry Watson here to talk to us about Juneteenth, and he has a presentation to our police of chief, or chief of police as well, that he's going to make. It pains me greatly.
What a pleasure to be here for Police Officer Week too. I'm going to first, I'm doing double duty tonight. I'm doing the center gives, and I'm doing a messy activity for three dollars there for my outfit today, so just wanted to put that there. So again, I'm Terry Watson, and before I talk about Juneteenth, if you'll allow me to backtrack this a little bit on the police piece, yeah. So this year, we had our first S of J Community Bowling Event, which involved a competition between police and community members. Patent Township Police was represented, State College Police represented, and I am happy to say that bragging rights for the whole year goes to Chief Tyler Yawley. The ongoing joke was that, yeah, he's not going to let this down. He won, he won the whole, we had about, I think about 14 to 16 people show up for the bowling event, and so it was really nice, and we had some wings, some pizza, some good laughs, and some good times, so definitely thank you for, first of all, thank you both Amy and Tyler for both showing up to that event. I think it was, it shows the community that, you know, beyond the duty of policing, that there's a community component that is also important. All right, now that I'm at Juneteenth, thank you for that moment. So good evening, everyone. I'm honored to stand before you today as a representative of the Juneteenth Committee as well as a Patent Township resident. And as we look ahead of this year's Juneteenth Celebration centered around a powerful theme of our freedom, our fight, our future, we are asking the Patent Township to continue to sponsor this event, but this year with 500 bucks and for, and with representation. Why Juneteenth? Well, because it's more than just a historical milestone. It is living memory of the work we must continue together. It celebrates the end of slavery in our country, and it also challenges us to recognize the ongoing struggles for equality, dignity, and justice in every community, including our own. Our freedom reminds us that freedom is not fully realized until it is shared by all. Our fight speaks to the generations who have pushed forward in the face of injustice, and our future calls us to take action and to build a community where opportunity, safety, and respect are aspirational as well as expectations. So by sponsoring this celebration this year isn't just a gesture this year, it's a reflection of Patent Township's values, is our way of affirming that we recognize that diversity strengthens us, that history informs us, and that unity propels us. So with that said, I want to ask the Patent Township to continue to proudly support this Juneteenth Celebration, not just with words, but with a presence, and to show that we are going to be unwavering commitment to be a better and a more inclusive future for all. So again, the event is going to take place on June 13th, starting with our art gallery exhibition, and it's going to feature local and national artists, and then we are going to have our block party on this Saturday, Saturday, June 14th, at the MLK Plaza, which will feature music and poetry and really good times and good food if you, if y'all ever been to one before. So with that, I want to say thank you for considering it. And like I said, I'm doing double duty tonight, so I can stay for the whole thing, but I do appreciate your consideration.
Terry, do you want to stay up here if people have questions? You want to stay up here in case people have questions? I'll entertain a motion first, though, to donate $500 to the 2025 Juneteenth Celebration.
I would like to move that we donate the $500 in support of the 2025 Juneteenth Celebration.
We got a motion and second it. Discussion, questions? All right, well, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. You've got $500.
Thank you.
The Cavaliers, surprised you wore that today.
That's a long story, you see. This for, I'm a Chicago Bulls fan, but my wife bought me a, bought this for me because it still had C, and I cannot wear it because my wife, you know. I've been married for close to 25 years, I want to stay married, so I'm going to leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, take care. All right. Next, Resolution 2025-08, adopting the local match share for CADA.
So we have representatives from CADA here this evening. Our representative, Mark Parfitt, is on his way up. We also have Lori Miller and Dave Rishel, and they're going to go over some service updates and talk about the local match share for next year.
Thanks, Amy. Thank you, everyone. Just following up on that, I just want to share that CADA is the latest municipal authority in the county to recognize Juneteenth as an official holiday. Our board passed that two months ago. Took us a little longer, we have union contracts, and we want to make sure the buses keep running to get people to those activities on Juneteenth, but we got it done, so I wanted to share that. We're here tonight to talk about our annual local match. I'm going to share a little bit of information about what's happening across the state, and David and Lori are going to talk about the actual local match here at CADA. I hope when you leave tonight, you'll walk away, still feeling CADA is very much a resource that returns an investment on what you pay in on your local match. But we've told you many times, CADA is historically the third largest transit system in Pennsylvania. I want to spend just a brief moment telling you about the two that are larger than us, because it is not good times there. At Pittsburgh Public Transit, they're calling the situation catastrophic. They have a projected $100 million deficit starting this July. They're slashing services by 40%, eliminating 41 bus routes entirely, no service after 11:00 PM, reducing light rail service, including complete elimination at 12 of 53 stations. They are completely eliminating service in 19 municipalities in Allegheny, Beaver, and Westmoreland Counties, and three neighborhoods within the city of Pittsburgh. There's a 62% reduction in paratransit services for people with disabilities and senior citizens, a closure of 10 park and ride lots, elimination of funding for special event services, including Steelers games, the 2026 NFL Draft, and if you're driving into Pittsburgh for a sporting event, they're telling you to plan for a lot of extra time because of additional traffic on the road, and already parking rates in Pittsburgh have dramatically increased based on this projected cut at Pittsburgh Public Transit. On the other side of state in Septa, they're calling it a doomsday scenario. It's a $213 million structural deficit starting next year. They're announcing a service cut of 45%, eliminating 50 bus routes and five regional rail lines. There's a 9:00 PM curfew on all rail service, halting service to 66 stations, and reducing frequency among remaining routes by 20%. Special event service is also eliminated, a 21.5% fare increase makes Septa now one of the most expensive public transit systems in the state. They're projected to drive away 150,000 to 170,000 daily riders, triggering what is being called a transit death spiral. They could dismantle the region's transit infrastructure. They estimate an additional 275,000 vehicles will go on their roads because of these Septa cuts, and that will increase congestion and travel commute times on Interstate 76 eastbound by 20%. It's also having an impact on property values, because in big cities, if you live near transit, your property's worth more. This is plummeting property values by about $20 billion, with single-family homes on the main line losing about $57,000 in value per households. The trickle down to that is, it also affects revenues for schools and the municipalities. It's also unknown if there will be service for events like the FIFA World Cup and America's 250th anniversary next year. Why am I telling you about Pittsburgh and Philadelphia? Because CADA at one point in time, and we've talked about this recently, we were on this pathway. When I joined the board in 2017, we were expected to fall off our so-called fiscal cliff, I believe in 2023. That COVID stimulus money bought us a little bit of time, we're very thankful for. I personally am very thankful to David and the CADA team for developing a plan and working with all of you. CADA is no longer anywhere near our fiscal cliff. We are projectively safe until the 2040s. So it's a sharp contrast to what is happening, not just in Pittsburgh and Philadelphia, but to be honest, across the nation. And I really want to attribute part of that to all of you who stood by CADA through some very challenging decisions, especially when we had select municipalities not want to pay their reasonable contributions to support public transportation. There was immense pressure and lobbying to give in to some of those municipalities and provide service at a level and cost that would have increased CADA's deficit and reliance on reserves and perhaps put us on the wrong pathway. But because all of you stood by CADA, we were able to increase our efficiencies, reduce costs, and ensure we are providing equitable service with local contributions. All of this made a big difference, and simply put, CADA, again, is one of the most financially stable public transit systems in the nation. We are now actually at a point where others are cutting, CADA is actually growing service. As David and Lori will share, we are going to try to expand the CADA Go Micro Transit, a phase in over approximately a year, to cover 100% of Patent Township. Every square inch of Patent Township, we would like to have access to CADA Go Micro Transit. To my knowledge, this is the first time in CADA's 50 years of service to the center region that all of the municipality would be covered, between either CADA Go and CADA Bus. And we're also hoping to do that for all of the member municipalities. When you look at the map, it's huge increases in coverage to Ferguson and Harris Townships as well, and we're really proud of that. We're also excited to offer a free summer youth pass to all local youth this summer. David and Lori are going to share more details about that. I was very excited when I heard about this, because there's two huge benefits. One, by providing free reliable transportation to places like Park Forest Pool, Welsh Pool, Center Region Park and Rex programs. Another activities, local youth are more likely to be engaging in positive, safe, and supervised activities, and as a community, the more we can direct youth to those types of activities, the less likely they are to be engaging in perhaps more negative activities. Hope the chief would agree with that statement. So we hope the township will join us in promoting that free youth pass. Also, by engaging youth, especially teenagers, to ride CADA in their younger years, the more comfortable they'll be with public transit the rest of their lives. Whether they stay here and go to Penn State and continue riding CADA, or go somewhere else, it may also offer public transit. So again, we're very proud of that program. It's a pilot program this summer, but we are already hearing really good results. So again, I want to thank you for your continued support of CADA and public transit in the center region. I'm now going to turn it over to David and Lori, and they're going to go into details about the Patent Township Local Match.
Thank you, Mark. I am never going to do public speaking again without Mark giving an introduction. That is fabulous. Thank you, sir. Well, hi, good to see you again, and geez, he stole all our thunder. Maybe we're just done. We do want to go through a few highlights of how things have been over the past year, where we have planned for the coming year, and answer any questions that you may have. Next slide, please. Or not.
Let me try to get it started again.
I can just talk through it if...
Yeah, if you don't mind.
So I was going to give you a breakdown of our budget. So in the coming year, our proposed budget is 29, just over $29 million. As in past budgets, about 60-some percent of that is going to be covered by state and local subsidy, and about $900,000 of that is going to be covered by Local Match from you folks and from the other municipalities, and from Penn State as well. I want to mention a couple specific things that have come up in some other meetings. You folks may be aware of this, but there's often a conversation about Penn State and their contribution. Penn State, of course, also pays Local Match, and they also pay us a contract fee for some of the services that we run on campus, because we run on campus, we don't charge fares, because it's faster boarding, just helps us to run faster. So Penn State will pay us this year, we're still finishing our negotiations with Penn State, and they've had a rough year, as you know, but probably about $2.8 million they're going to be also providing to CADA, and that's contract revenue for us. A few other things, some highlights from our budget. One of the things that we're going to be pursuing this year is a fare increase. Septa, sorry, Mark. CADA has not done a fare increase for our mainline services since 2020. And since 2020, if we look at the inflation rate and the cost of living index, it's increased almost 22% since 2020. And what we're proposing is a fare increase from $2.20, oh, it's up, okay, a fare increase from $2.20 to $2.50. That's a 14% increase. It actually doesn't quite keep pace with inflation, but frankly, we get a lot of feedback from customers with our current 220 fare of, why don't you just make it 225? So we're trying to find a round number, so we thought jumping from 20 to 250 would kind of get us there. We want to see the impact on ridership, if there is any, and now that we, I think this year, we're going to be able to declare that we have fully recovered from our COVID slide and ridership, we're kind of back to normal, then we can assess the impact of this fare increase and see what we have to do into the future. Because one of the things that Mark pointed out, how CADA is in good financial shape, it's reasons like this why. We really try to be thoughtful of, you know, our costs and our revenue and make sure that we're not spending more than we have. This impact, or this will impact our big buses, our fixed route service, and our CADA Go services. It will not impact our CADA Ride services, our paratransit for folks with disabilities and senior citizens. We had a fare increase for that service two years ago, and that will not be impacted by this. Excuse me. Overall, our ridership is up. We are looking at about a 3.5% increase system-wide, but that really doesn't tell the whole story. We've had some pretty amazing successes with the route restructuring that we did last year. You may recall when we were here last time, we talked about how on some of our main corridors, we really restructured the service to have very frequent service, about every 11 minutes during peak, and that's really paid off. We've seen here in your area, the Martin Street Corridor is up by 10%, which is just fabulous. Other side of town, the Wapalene Corridor is up 16%. The Viro Boulevard Corridor is up a little bit, but it was already really high, so we were not expecting it to be much of an increase there. And we've also had increases on the Atherton Connector and the College Connector, two of our routes that have kind of lagged in the past. The Atherton Connector is up 10% this year, which is just fabulous. So we're really happy with these increases. I'm sorry, 25%, not 10%, 25% increase on the Atherton Connector. In addition to our service increases, we've also negotiated with our apartment complexes that have a part of our past program, a 6% increase for this year, and assuming that we land the plane with Penn State very soon, it looks like they're going to provide about a 6% increase for their contracted rate to CADA. So those are kind of some big budget highlights. I also want to mention, as Mark had said, a little bit more about some service changes. First, some things we're doing this summer, and then some things that are going to be going on throughout the year. Next slide, please. So a couple of route changes. Next slide? Thank you. This one is in town, but we wanted to share it because some of your residents here may use this connection. This is what we're calling our University Parkway Route, UP Route. It starts in downtown, it goes out Atherton, kind of out to Westerly Parkway, and then down by the high school, and then back Wapalene, then onto Easterly Parkway, and then up University Drive on the campus. So it kind of makes a loop. This is really intended to be a summer route, so the young people who have our youth pass, or anybody else who would like to travel out to the pool, or to the high school area where there are kind of activities, they can do that. It's also a route that's going to help us practice some things that we may want to continue in this area. There's going to be a lot of construction in this area in the next couple of years, and we need to add some capacity here. So we're sort of doing a summer service, and we're also testing how the route will work in this area, and we may be able to continue this if it goes well. Next slide is some summer changes that we're doing out here. We have a route that we, I think we did most of this route last summer, we call it the HV. It's a combination of the H and the V, how clever is that? But it goes from the campus out through Toth Trees, and then back around, over the bridge and back into this area, and then ultimately down Atherton, back toward campus. This expands some of our late-night services on the weekends, and, I'm sorry, during the week, and then on the weekends, you can see there is some dotted areas here that are extended service for Sundays, where we don't have any service. We ran a version of this last year, it was very popular, so we brought it back, so we expect it will be popular this year, it really kind of fills some holes in our service. And these are running now, these routes started this week. They'll run through the summer into August until we go back to full service on the, in the third week of August, put it that way. Mark already mentioned this, but we're really delighted this year that our youth pass program, we looked at the numbers, and it was up from previous years, but it's not a ton of people. We don't make a ton of money from this, and as Mark rightly pointed out, if we can encourage younger people to use CADA and to sort of get them into the habit of using transit, get them familiar with using transit, then they'll become lifelong users. So it's sort of a good investment for us into the future. And I can tell you that this, Lori's team has done a fabulous job promoting this. We've connected with a few social influencers. Happy Valley Hannah is one, and she's had a number of posts supporting this, and we've had tremendous demand already. These passes really just went on sale, and our customer service office has reported there have been many people coming in to get them, so we are psyched about this, we hope this is going to be a very positive thing. So these are free. Any young person under 18 can ride CADA all summer for free, so can't get much better than that. And this is good for all of our services, not just for the big bus, it's also good for paratransit. I'm sorry, not paratransit, microtransit. So the next slide, as Mark was saying, we're really delighted about this. We've been looking at our microtransit system, CADA Go, and it's been really successful in terms of being able to reach people that we simply wouldn't be able to reach if we were just relying on bus routes. Because the thing about a bus route is, it's wonderful if it goes near your house, but if it doesn't, then you're out of luck and you have to walk. And as you get out away from the kind of dense area like this, where you've got neighborhoods that aren't that dense, no matter how you route the bus, it's going to leave a lot of people unserved. So a service like CADA Go, which is an on-demand service, allows us to offer some level of public transit access to everybody, essentially. And we are going to be phasing this in this year. We believe we have the current capacity to be able to do this, we're going to phase it in carefully so we don't overcommit. But throughout the year, our goal will be, before the end of this fiscal year, to have CADA Go extended to every area of the center region, so that every resident has some access to CADA. And of course, if you ride CADA Go, you get free transfers to the fixed route system, so you can really travel anywhere in the region. A big piece of this is going to be the refinement... A big piece of this is going to be the refinement of something that our new software system that we bought last year offers us. And that's the ability to connect very accurately from CADA GO to the bus system. When we increase the frequencies of our kind of big corridors so that around every 11 minutes there's a bus, that now makes it easier to connect a CADA GO ride to a bus if you want to travel into the downtown area. The software also gets a data feed from our bus system. It's the same thing if you've ever used our bus app. It'll tell you where the buses are and everything. This app uses that same data feed to help coordinate and sort of structure the whole trip, to pick you up at a time when we know we can deliver you so you can make that transfer to the big bus. So that's going to be a big project for us this year. Next slide. And a few other things we've been working on with, as we implemented our new app for CADA GO. Really, we put it in FY '24, but really got it running this past year. Our ridership for CADA GO is up almost to 3,000 passengers a month. And we're doing, every indication is that service is running really well. 4.9 out of 5 stars for passengers using the service. Almost 98% of the people who request a ride get it whenever they want it. And our on-time performance for pickups and drop-offs is 99, 98%. So really running well. I think the only problem that we have with the service is new riders often will think it's going to be like Uber. And we do shared rides, and some people don't like that, so you have to become accustomed to it. You know, our response is, "Uber's available, this is 220." So we're sharing rides, it's public transit, it's not Uber. You probably already know this, another thing that's happening this year is our Beeline service in Bellefonte is going to be discontinued on June 30th. Excuse me, Bellefonte and Benner Township have decided not to renew. So those services are going to come to an end. We're working with center counties so that if residents in this area want to travel to Bellefonte, we'll have arrangements, you'll be able to do that. So those are all ongoing. A few other things. This was our 50th anniversary. A lot of celebrations this year. If you didn't see our restored bus number one, our old General Motors coach, you'll see that in the July 4th parade. We've been getting a lot of mileage out of that, no pun intended. We're also implementing a new fare system. Throughout this summer and really in August, the fare boxes you see on the buses are going to be mostly removed, and you'll be able to pay with a visual scanner on a smartphone or on fare media that you can either print at home or you can buy. And by September, you'll be able to pay with a credit card. So big changes coming there, really should help people, more options, improve ridership. We also negotiated a new contract with our employees. And one of the pieces of that, as Mark mentioned, was the addition of the Juneteenth holiday to CADA's schedule. For us, that's a working holiday. So we have slightly reduced service on that day, but we will be operating. So it's not a non-operational day. And our expansion of the Apartment Pass program in this township in particular has been really positive. Last year, you may recall that we changed our Apartment Pass program. It used to be you could just ride a single route into town and back. And we expanded it so you could use the pass to go anywhere. And that's been very successful, a lot of increases in ridership. And it's enabled us to actually be able to charge more for the pass. So it's had benefits to passengers and financial benefits to CADA. We also negotiated a new contract for employee benefits this year, which saved us more than $700,000. We went to the market, changed our provider, and the employees are happy. My finance director's happy, so everybody's happy. And we're going to be looking, another project for this year is looking at a new single app that we can offer passengers. Because right now, you have the bus app, there's the transit app for Go. And then our fare collection system is also going to have an app. We're like, "Oh, my gosh, so many apps." So we're trying to find a single app, there are a couple out there, where we can combine all these into one, and then you can access all that with one app on your phone than having three. So we're working on that. That'll be moving, I would anticipate, fall, we'll probably be able to move that forward. It's surprisingly not as hard as you think. There are a number of companies out there that do that, at a very reasonable price. Another couple of things, our bus stop program. We've had a team of engineers from PennDOT that have surveyed every single bus stop in our system. We're waiting for a report from that. We're evaluating the condition of our stops, if we have any accessibility compliance issues we need to address. And we're also categorizing our bus stops based on ridership. And we're going to be trying to standardize the kind of amenities package we have at different stops. If you've got a really busy stop, you'll have benches and information displays and things like that, a shelter. Less busy stops won't have as much. So this is a very long-term project. But whenever we get the report back, we'll give you more of a sense of the stops that we're going to be working on. Although we did change all the batteries on all of our solar lights, and we put up, as you probably have seen, new bus stop signs. And we are also going to be putting up flags on those signs this year, which indicate the routes for each stop, excuse me, and the stop number, which you can use for our automated system. So you'll see further enhancements there. Got some new buses this year. Driver recruitment continues to be a challenge. We are, we are fine to deliver what we have, but we wish we had more so we could provide some more service. So continuing to work on that. And a couple of things we're going to be exploring in this coming year, one of which is airport service. We're talking to the airport authority. We've gotten a clarification from PennDOT that even though we no longer will have a contract with Benner Township, we can probably still serve the airport if we have a contract with the airport authority. And we're looking for some model of on-demand service. CADA has tried scheduled service to the airport, which has not worked because the airline schedules changed. And the bus service just didn't match. So our hope is to develop some kind of a schedule ahead-of-time service that you can use. So that's a project for this year. And a similar thing to access to Amtrak. We would like to see if we can do some schedule in advance service to go to Louis Towne and Tyrone. So if we know ahead of time, we can pick you up. That's a bigger project, we have to work with Amtrak, and they're a gorilla. Just because they're so big. And we have to figure out what we would charge for this, some kind of operation, how it would work. But we're looking into both of those projects this year. And we're also going to continue to look, as we've talked about here, possibility of a park-and-ride in this area, and also some kind of a transfer center somewhere in the center region so that we can have better kind of multimodal transfers in the area. So those are the big things, and now to our ask. So our request to the township this year for local match is $123,607. That's nine, just under $10,000 more than what we asked for last year. Trying to keep the request as minimal as we can. It helps, we're making some progress toward hitting the state goal of 15%. This gets us to 8.76%. So it's a modest increase for this year. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Can I actually entertain a motion, and then we'll have questions, discussions? Yeah, so a motion to approve Resolution 2025-8, adopting a local match share for CADA.
So move second.
All right, discussion, questions? Supervisor Rob.
I first want to thank you for all your hard work. I took CADA GO here. I also took CADA Ride to the James L. Van Zandt BA Center. This week, week before last. So as a veteran using the CADA Ride to your drivers, thank you. And especially, and Lori, I hope you hear me, Kelly at CADA is extraordinary. She continues to be the voice of CADA, kind, patient, and helps us through to navigate whether it's CADA GO, whether it's CADA Ride. So I thank you, thank your drivers. Because without them, I don't know where we would be. I watched your CADA Ride driver take a customer into the healthcare parking lot. I don't know how he was able to get the bus in there and out of there without hitting anybody's car. And was just as patient and understanding to all of us who were riding. So please, continue to thank them, and that we, all of us riders, appreciate what they do.
Thank you. Totally will convey that back. If I could tell a little anecdote to support that, because we feel the same as you. We love our operators, they're just fabulous on Go and on the fixed route buses. Two weeks ago, whenever we had that storm come through the area, the operators were just fabulous. We didn't have to suspend service on any of our routes. We rerouted almost everything, but we kept operating because we knew there were people who needed to get home. And the operators were just fabulous. And in one case, we had an operator in the borough who drove by a house on Pugh Street that was on fire and reported that to dispatch. And dispatch tried to call 911, and right after the storm, the 911 lines were just hopelessly jammed. So we were able to just share that information on our radio network, and another CADA employee literally flagged down an Alpha Fire Company person and told them about the fire, and then they were able to respond and take care of that. So you're right, our operators are just wonderful.
And I can tell you, one of your drivers, a tree did hit one of his sheds, and he still came in. So, you know, it is the dedication to your drivers.
Absolutely.
So thank you.
Fabulous, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Supervisor Abrams, can you talk into the mic too, supervisors?
Tasty. I'm glad you mentioned Amtrak. My wife and I had occasion to go four weeks in a row from Tyrone to Pittsburgh. Trains there meet up with local transit right at the Union Station. And there's a large complex that's being built near 30th Street Station in Philadelphia. But the train, the people who operate the train are extremely courteous. If you have the slightest problem getting on or off the train or need something, they help you out. And I'm glad you mentioned Tyrone because that's closer than Louis Towne, which I remember when I was a freshman, and this was in the age that there were dinosaurs, that you had to clear from the road when you went anywhere. But there was service to Louis Towne then. And I realize it's a small thing, but it might be helpful.
If we can figure out how to do it, and one of the things we're concerned about is even one ride will probably take a vehicle 90 minutes to make the round trip. So we've got to think about, do we have the fleet to be able to do that? Depends on the demand. So we're going to dip our toe in the water and see how far we can get.
David, can we meet? Because there are several elected officials, Patty Stevens, Jeremy, I'm almost Eric O'Near. Several of us have met with the Secretary of Transportation. And Mark would let you know, we've been working on that for a long time. And we have made the connection, not only there, but Penn State. So we will be looking to work with you to make this happen, because it's been in the works.
We'd love to work with you. I mean, that's why we're doing it, because we work with the COG as well. So we're aware of the interests, so we're seeing what we can do.
Another piece to that is Amtrak out of Altoona has now expanded north to Tyrone. So if we can make our connection there, that not only opens Amtrak, but possibly, you know, the whole 99 corridor. So it's a big project, it's not going to happen overnight, but we're making baby step progress.
Thank you.
We're looking at it for sure.
Supervisor Whitman.
I'm curious who suggested the free pass to teenagers, or how that came about. I think it's brilliant.
It just came up at a staff meeting. Frankly, we were talking about how to make it more useful, and I don't even remember which staff member brought it up. We were talking about how many passes there were, and someone just said, "Can we just give this away?" And we said, "Why not?" Yeah. It's not that much money. And the board was very supportive of that.
Changing behavior, it's great.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate the presentation. I want to just piggyback off of that, the summer pass. It seems like y'all are trying to do a lot of innovative, creative advertising for that. And I'm wondering how the, our municipality can like get on board with trying to promote this, maybe to our residents.
Yeah, Lori, please.
I get rained at this hour of the night. Have a township meeting that meets like one Wednesday a month?
With the Happy Valley Business?
Yes.
Yeah, and they're not every month.
Quarter.
Quarter. But I can reach out, and we can meet with them to try and coordinate and collaborate with, to do a promotion like we did with Happy Valley Hannah. We're working with the DID downtown to do a collaboration with their businesses, so we're happy to do that anywhere and everywhere within the center region.
And also, reach out to Sophie Weston, our communications person, because she's fantastic. She's no Happy Valley Hannah, but she's close. And she can help promote that as well for you guys. And she has some really great ideas. She's been doing a great job promoting our safety fair. So I'm sure she could have some different ideas as well, that we can try to get some promotion out about this.
Appreciate that. Can we do the safety fair, chief? Information?
So anybody's welcome to attend. Matt Mabey, who works at Bobby Ray Hall, he's the general manager, you'll have to know him. He generally handles any of the business side of things. And the police departments, we handle all the first responders that attend. However, we're always looking for as many people are welcome to attend as we can accommodate. So a little short notice, it's this Saturday. So I don't know if you can pull it off, but if you can, you're welcome to call Matt and talk to him and set up a table and advertise whatever you'd like at the safety fair for sure.
Yeah, I think making, you know, the center region accessible to everybody in the center region is ideal. I'm not sure if y'all talked about maybe part of the difficult, one difficulty in probably getting buy-in for especially youth taking on these passes. But as you were talking, I was thinking about, you know, some of the residents here in Patton Township and trying to get over to the YMCA, for example, and trying to send a kid. I know for me, when I was younger, I was, get on the bus, go where you need to go. But I get a lot of fear and trepidation, you know, amongst our community. But thinking through like the literacy as well of like, okay, how do I make these different types of connections? I'm wondering if there's also some support for families who maybe want to, you know, have their kid take one of these passes, yet maybe you're fearful that I don't want my kid to get lost. And so I didn't know if y'all have a Q and A or accessible sort of like...
And another long-term plan that we're working with the State College Area School District is to have an ambassador program. So we will have students at the State College Area School District who are representatives of CADA and help with the educational process. But we have also reached out to the State College Area School District to help promote this event. So they promoted it through the school as well.
Yeah, and so you mentioned a park-and-ride, potentially here, park-and-ride?
That's my dream, Waddle Road and Toth Trees, right at the 99 interchange. I would love to see a park-and-ride lot and then a stop for the Megabus, and then a transfer for CADA as well, so that folks that are coming in to go to campus from Blair County, wherever, folks that are leaving to go out of town, they have a safe spot to park. That is something, something we submitted to the LRTP to put on their list as well. But that's something that I think we would really benefit from.
Yeah, and being an employee at Penn State, I'm aware of, you know, students, especially those commuting having difficulty just paying for like parking, finding parking in general downtown, as well as even staff who are commuting into town. And our rates are pretty high monthly for some of those passes. And so I think that would be a beneficial endeavor to seek. And as well as like for our businesses then. So we have a park-and-ride here in Patton Township, and then people after work or other commuters... ride here in Patton Township. And then people after work or other commuters, they may stay around and frequent our businesses. And so, I see that as a beneficial thing for, for all entities. So.
We agree.
Yeah. My, my last thing. Okay, you go and then I'll go.
I was just going to ask you, have you reached out to WPSU and let them know about the riders?
We've done a press release and they're on our automatic press release. So, they've received that information. And it's been picked up by WTAJ, WJAC. So, it has been publicized, statecollege.com.
Yeah. And then last thing, I'm, I'm aware that we are aware that rate increases happen. And so, we probably expected this to, to happen. And just the number, does that feel good, looking at our finance director? Feel reasonable?
Yes. Yeah. Well, the numbers that, yeah, that, that varies.
All right. So, there, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I want to put a plug in for the children's safety fair. I've, I participated one year as a rep of the, the sustainability group at COG. And we had a, a children's activity that actually came up and made a little placard for their light switch that said, turn the lights off and leave. While they were, and I'm not telling you anything you probably don't know, but while they were working on that, we got to talk to the parents. And it's an audience that you don't usually get at events around here, like, or it's, it's fast. So, it's a, I found it was a fairly new audience. These are young parents with young kids, right? And then those kids, of course, are going to be teenagers soon. Love what you're doing. Thanks much.
Yeah, we appreciate that intelligence because we, we are rapidly learning. We have a lot of young people who use our service. And we advertise on social media and Facebook. And they're like, Facebook?
Facebook.
So, we, we got to get on TikTok. That's, that's where it is. It's a moving target.
Yeah.
That's why Sophie Weston is one of those young people.
Yes. She speaks that language.
And so, I know we have a public comment. Let me make this last point before I get to you. I appreciate y'all's work. I've been here over the years and seeing the work that y'all have done over the years, trying to get things in order and fielding lots of different feedback from different constituencies. But the way that y'all have, at least from my vantage point, sort of remained true to, you know, truth-telling and transparency. But, you know, innovation as well. I, I just appreciate y'all's work and to see that y'all have gotten to the place that you're at now. And knowing that it's not finished business, it's just good to see that type of, an organization entity as large as y'all really be devoted to like trying to continue to provide good quality services while taking stock of like, you know, difficulties and, and headwinds. And so, and I also think through being in Center County, being a State College area, the way that like we are, there's a lot of cool things happening that are sort of like a beacon and a sort of like model. And so, as Mark, you, you're pointing out, you know, the Pittsburgh sort of transportation, I know we didn't, probably didn't talk about Septa, but that, you know, this being the third largest, I think, you know, a transportation entity in, in Pennsylvania. And y'all got your stuff together. I think it's, it, just as a representative here in the center region, it's just heartwarming to see us be able to contribute and help support an industry that is, is so vitally needed to our community. So, just thank y'all. Thank y'all for that.
Thank you very much. And if I could turn the compliment, as you probably have seen over the last couple of years, we've had to make some hard decisions. And we've struggled with not enough drivers. And we've struggled with, you know, how to adjust our networks so that we can reliably provide a core service and make some decisions about some areas that were not very productive. And it's through your support that we were able to do that. And if I could give my boss a compliment and also thank you for our chair at CADA, we as staff can't do this without the support of our board of directors. And Mark has been fabulous as board chair. And, you know, they take a lot of the heat for the stuff that we're doing. And they help to make it possible. So, thank you for giving him to us.
Hey, a comment for the resident?
I'm still Valerie from Patton Township. I, I love CADA drivers, all the staff I've ever met. Fabulous. Just people who go out of their way, bend over backwards to be super helpful. And I really, it's part of the reason that my husband and I moved to this area was because there is public transit. I did grow up in Pittsburgh. I've also lived in Philly. And I've also used their systems. And I love their systems too. I'm all about walk, bike, bus, and rally for rail. So, it's great that you're thinking about connecting to rail service. If we could only get rail service more reliable too. It's all work in progress. One of the things I'd like to add, when you talk about price increases, it is challenging for people. I do know part of the reason that the number of people who walk more frequently on the trail, bicycle more frequently, is because they can't actually afford to take the bus. So, fortunately, we're taking care of the trail. So, there's more walkability and bikeability that way. Even saw it through the winter this year, increased dramatically. For myself, I kind of started boycotting going to Belfont because I can walk and bicycle to a lot of places because I'm lucky. But the places that I'd like to be able to get to with public transit, I can't. So, it would be nice to figure out how we can make it easy to get people to those further spots. Anyways, and the other thing is the, I don't blame anybody in CADA or the Pittsburgh Transit or the Philly system for the flawed public transportation that we have in the state of Pennsylvania. It is a legislative issue. We do not get funded well enough for a public service that is essential. When you want to talk about an excellent example, look at Massachusetts. They just put a fair share amendment in. It's a wealth tax for people who make over a million dollars a year. Four percent has been able to reduce and make free in some areas, public transit. They've expanded their routes. They've done dramatic things with transit. They also have free lunch and breakfast for all public school children. And I believe that community college is also covered for people who live in state. So, when we talk about transportation, we have great local effort and support here. But we do want to be able to go beyond with public transit, beyond this region. We want to be connected to the rest of the world. We have an international university right here in Pennsylvania. We need an international public transit system. Seriously. But I do thank you for your efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that education too. All right. There is a motion on the floor that's been seconded. Any further discussions, questions? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Mr. Passes?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. We're on page five of 13. So, still going to be a long night. For those, if you need a break, please take a break when you need it. We want to just keep moving, moving on through. So, next one is proposed ordinance 2025-646, creating the Assistant Township Manager position.
So, at last month's meeting, the board expressed your support for creating the Assistant Township Manager position. This position will replace our Public Works Director. So, it'll be the Assistant Township Manager for Public Works. And additionally, we're going to change Mr. Pegg's title to be the Assistant Township Manager for Finance and Administration.
All right. So, open up public hearing? Do I have to make a motion to open?
You can just, yeah, you can open.
Okay. Public hearing is opened. Any questions, comments from anyone?
Makes sense.
Nothing in the public? I know we talked about this at length last meeting. All right. So, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
All right. Okay, what do I do now?
You can call the question.
Call the vote for closing the public hearing.
Oh, yeah. Vote for closing the public hearing. I forgot.
Oh, all in favor to close the public hearing signify by saying aye. Aye. All right. Public hearing is closed. And now, I will take a motion to approve the proposed ordinance 2025-646.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Congratulations to this person.
Thank you. Thank you. My chest will be.
This, this one got a trophy. This one gets a new title. I, I'm not going to make it.
Thank you. Thank you. I want to thank my family.
Oh, my lord. This is going to be insufferable.
Well, this isn't for him yet though. Larry? Okay. Moving on, nothing from Public Safety, Public Works. We have nothing. All right, Planning and Zoning. First order of business is the Planning Commission report.
Good evening. My name is Jim Peron, representing the Planning Commission. At the Patton Township Planning Commission meeting of May 5th, 25, the following business was conducted. We heard a presentation from a community member who is strongly supportive of affordable housing in Patton Township in the center region. As schedules permit, we look forward to having this as an agenda item for future Pat, Patton Township Planning Commission meetings as soon as possible. Staff reviewed an MPC definition of no-impact home-based business, which provided the basis for draft regulations for both no-impact and low-impact home-based businesses. These two proposals were approved by unanimously for your consideration, this amendment to the zoning ordinance. Following brief discussion, we supported staff's recommendation to move forward with amending the Property Maintenance Code to change the rental permit regulations. This is meant as a step towards short-term rental regulations, which are in process. As part of that discussion, we reviewed a proposed ordinance entitled Property Maintenance and Fire Code, which reflects several amendments and modifications to the Rental Housing and Building Safety Code. These changes were reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission for consideration by the Board of Supervisors. Park Forest United Methodist Church requested a replotting of three existing tracks to two parcels to facilitate an optimal layout for the church property and adjoining residential properties, which we approved for your consideration. The final land development plan for the Prose Kava Restaurant in the Patton Crossing Development was reviewed and also approved for your consideration. The Grace Point Phase Seven Section B subdivision plan for 17 lots and 15 planned houses was also reviewed and approved for your consideration. And I guess it's, you know, Public Works Night with the earlier proclamation and the community members' comments. But we also raised a proposal or a mini proclamation, I guess, and unanimously approved, expressing our sincere appreciation for the Patton Township, of the Patton Township Planning Commission and community for the exemplary services of the various personnel involved in the recent weather challenges and power outages we experienced. So, there being no further business, our meeting was adjourned. Questions or anything?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the cookie.
All right. Short-term rental regulations.
So, I will start this. We have Jenna online and we also have Walt Schneider in the audience. So, as the board is aware, we've been talking about enacting some kind of short-term rental regulations for the last couple of months. Short-term rentals, the state has done two studies on them now. And they're very big business in the state of Pennsylvania. They account for $856 million in revenue statewide and $33 million in revenue within a five-mile radius of State College. So, clearly, and clearly, the short-term rental market is kind of housed around the touristy areas in the state, the things that have big draws to like Penn State University. And what we're seeing is that we have some short-term rentals where we have very good neighbors and we have some that aren't such good neighbors. And Park Forest has particularly been hard-hit in terms of people buying up properties and turning them into short-term rentals. So, we had, as I'm sure you remember, we had a lot of folks that own short-term rentals that came to the Planning Commission and the board meetings to discuss this. And as the Planning Commission was reviewing what to do with these regulations, we decided that it was probably better to look at a way to step into something. Because number one, we don't know how many short-term rentals we have in Patton Township. We anecdotally can pull some numbers off of Airbnb and VRBO, but we really have no idea. And number two, we don't know outside of, again, anecdotally of the problems that have been reported to us and the people that have called the police, we don't know what kind of problems we're seeing with these short-term rentals, just that we're seeing a lot of them crop up. So, in the discussions, and this was very well-received by the short-term rental owners who had been coming to the meetings, we decided to do, again, this step in. And what the step in is, right now, our Property Maintenance Code requires that if you rent for seven consecutive days, you have to have a rental housing permit. We're going to drop that number to one. So, if you're renting for one day, you have to get a rental housing permit. So, that encompasses your short terms. And then, we're going to also put in place what the borough has, which is a point system. And the point system takes into account the issues that we're seeing. Noise, traffic, parking, trash, sidewalks not being maintained, grass and weeds, that kind of thing. If you amass five points, you have to have a meeting with me to discuss how you're going to move forward with correcting, I know, it's scary, with correcting your issues. If you have 10 points, your rental housing permit can actually be revoked for a period of a year. So, there's some teeth to it, which I think will help us address some of these issues. One of the discussion points we had at the Planning Commission level was that we would like to then come back in a year and have a report on, because we're going to change the rental housing permit application. Right now, it says if you're in college in Ferguson, you check if it's a short or a long term. We're going to add Patton to that. So, we'll have a better idea of how many we have. But in a year, we can then look at how many short-term rentals we have, what kind of issues we might be having, and also what the state decides to do. The Center for Rural PA did a just encompassing study to look at the general data. The state joint government committee sat down, the local government commission sat down, and they did a study to look at the impacts. They're recommending more stringent regulations. They're recommending that municipalities be allowed to ban these from residential zoning districts. They're kind of looking at it from all sides. I don't know if anything will come out of that. But we wanted to leave the door open that if something does change, we then can make decisions. But we wanted to have the data first. So, Walt actually put together a draft ordinance, which would do exactly what I just said in terms of the changes and, and put in the point system. And he can answer any questions that you might have on that. We are trying to get this done so that folks can get these permits in place before the next Penn State semester starts. Although, we understand from talking with the short-term rental owners, summer is a big time for short-term rentals in State College, in addition to football season and the academic year. So, again, Walt is here if you have any questions. And we are looking to move this forward for possible public hearing and adoption at our next meeting.
So, can you give me like an example, like how many points if you had no your grass?
Walt. Walt can answer the point system.
Yeah. And just for the public's awareness, can we define short-term rentals, what that looks like versus long-term?
So, good evening. I'm Walt Schneider. I'm your building code official. So, when we talk about short-term rental, currently in Patton Township, there is no definition of short-term versus long-term rental. So, at this point, we're going to ask people to self-declare on the permit application if they're deeming themselves short-term or long-term. Typically, long-term rental is somebody who's staying for more than a month at a time. When we talk about other codes, they look at transient is defined as less than 30 days and long-term is more than 30 days or non-transient. So, but typically in the industry, that short-term rental is a week or less. So, somebody who's taking a vacation, those kinds of things. When it talks about points with respect to grass and weeds, we basically have ordinance violations. And I'm um, we basically have ordinance violations, and I'm going off my back of my hand, I believe ordinance violations are one point. Uh, we get into more severe violations, fire code violations and so on, are two points, when we start getting the life safety issues. Um, and then we can get into also, if there's violations that involve the police, um, there's also three-point violations. There's one violation that's actually a five-point violation, and that's renting without a permit. So, the points themselves can't accrue, with the exception of the renting without a permit, you can't accrue more than three points in a twenty-four-hour period. And so you can't kinda ring the bell at one shot, short of, again, renting without a permit and being caught for renting without a permit. The township will monitor the points. They'll collect, uh, information from the Center Region Code Administration, from their own ordinance enforcement officers as well as police, to be able to determine then the points and where they ride. Uh, as the manager indicated, when you hit a five-point level, that automatically drives a meeting with the manager with the idea of trying to develop a corrective action plan prior to getting to that ten-point level. Uh, this system has been in place in the borough for a number of years and has it been successful.
Do we have the manpower to, and, and, like, how busy is this gonna keep you?
Uh, we have found with respect to the borough, there's not that many of them. Quite honestly, most property owners really don't wanna garner points, they don't wanna do this. And what we've found is, most property owners do their best to maintain their properties and, uh, do so, you know, quite well and are not getting into that five to ten-point range. Occasionally, you might get one, two, you know, three points, but usually that's kinda the, the check sign to say, hey, we, I really need to do something here, I need to be more mindful of it, and that they do it self-corrective, and we never get to the meeting with the manager.
And the nice thing is, they're gonna have to have a local person that's in charge of the property. So where we've had issues, especially this winter, when we had winter, in Park Forest, people were not maintaining their sidewalks. And so the neighbors would call and say the sidewalk isn't maintained, and then our ordinance enforcement officers chasing down people who weren't in the country, weren't in state, and they were just paying the fine, and they didn't have a local person. Now they'll have a local person who can actually go out and make sure that the sidewalk's being maintained, the grass is being mowed. And I did have a couple that stopped to see me during coffee with the manager from Park Forest, and Betsy was there, to talk about, uh, their concerns with some short-term rentals on their street. And I told them, I said, put the non-emergency number for the police department on speed dial and call them. Like, we don't have a way of knowing all of the issues that we're seeing, or not seeing. So if you're have, have a concern, call, it's better to call the police or call us during the day or call Walt, and we can look into it and figure out what's going on and try to address these things.
Supervisor Abrams.
Uh, this, it turns out to be... More trouble than it's worth, but, um, since Amy pointed out that there's a lot of uncertainty with this right now, and that maybe we don't have all the answers, maybe there should be a sunset thing added to our ordinance so that we guarantee ourselves to look at it again, say, in a year or eighteen months or two years. And that this also can, uh, make people feel a little more comfortable with it, that if, uh, we're making some mistakes with the ordinance that we wanna get rid of, we have a way of doing that automatically.
So I appreciate that suggestion. I would suggest maybe not sunsetting the ordinance, because this goes into our property maintenance code. I would suggest, though, that when you approve the ordinance, as part of that, you set a date, a year into the future, by which you would like to have a report delivered, and then that keeps all of us honest, we put that on the calendar, we collect that money. Um, there's been a couple of the short-term owners, there's one in particular, she talked to you, she's a township supervisor in Chester County. She's done a heck of a lot of research and has offered to help as well, so we can tap into some of our permanent residents that live in some of these neighborhoods and also some of these short-term rental owners, and talk about it in a year.
Does that feel satisfactory?
That's good.
Supervisor Rob.
Walt, um, I just have a question as we're doing the point system. Are there any that you can give, you give a warning to before you give this point system? Or is it just automatically you get the one point and you go?
No, I mean, i- it's similar to other items where you work with either police or the Center Region Code Administration. There's always been times when the, you know, code official or the police officer can use their discretion to be able to indicate, you know, look, we haven't had a problem, please take care of this. Um, we, we've had issues, for example, just on normal rentals where we'll indicate, um, for example, we might be doing a, a row of townhomes, and if you correct this before we leave, we'll come back and look at it. Those kinds of things. And if I may, this is also becoming consistent with Bellefonte Borough, State College Borough, College Township, Ferguson Township are all on one day, uh, for the rental duration. So you're really becoming consistent with most of the other municipalities in the region.
Well, and the other thing that we heard consistently, I'm sorry, during the discussions with the short-term rental owners and with the hotels in town, is that people, we have a house that they're renting out like the bottom of an unfinished basement, so people don't know what they're getting. So now with having to have the rental housing permit, they're going through the safety inspection, and that's making it safer, safer for the people that are renting these places.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate that the point system, it seems like it's, um, in your experience, it's not actually, even though people may get points, it's not, people aren't really maxing out to a point where they're meeting with the manager and getting things revoked. I think my worry for using discretion for like warnings and stuff like that would be, that it would just be inequitable. And again, we want this to sort of like have teeth, and so, um, yeah, so I would, I would probably caution against the, using discretion warnings and stuff like that. Supervisor Whitman?
Oh, how did you know? Yeah, um, is there a, um, a term, after which any points accrued will zero out and then you would start again?
So the points drop off twelve months after accrue.
Okay, that's, you probably said that somewhere.
It's a rolling drop-off.
Okay, thank you, you probably said that somewhere, and I just thought about it, so I had to, thanks so much.
Supervisor Hicheski? My only other point of concern is having the manager be the final say, kind of. Um, I don't, i- i- it seems like that, again, I understand it's unlikely for someone to get to that.
If I may, the manager's not the final say.
No.
So...
So you meet with the manager?
So you meet, the, the idea is you meet with the manager at five points and develop a consent agreement. The idea is, with the consent agreement is, is we're trying to, i- I call it the speed bump. So, hey, there's, you're at five points, what are you gonna do to make this better? We don't want you to get to ten. Ten, again, we go back to the manager. But there's an appeal level that is spelled out in the code, the first line of appeal is to the Center Region Appeals Board, beyond that, we get into the courts. But the manager is not the final say. We have a level of, a set of appeals beyond that, where if you disagree with the manager's ruling, that you can appeal it.
But the, the manager, though, is still sort of like the lightning, could be like the lightning rod there. Um, given that they're, they're creating recommendations or types of mandates before you get to...
Again, but we've found that this has been consistent with, again, State College Borough's had this in place for more than fifteen years, and it seems to have worked well. There's very, I don't know, actually, I don't know of any appeal beyond the manager, where they haven't come to an agreement. And it's usually mutual as to how they're gonna do this, because quite honestly, the property owner doesn't want this to happen either, so they're trying to protect their property, they're trying to do some, do the right things, so.
And there's always a rule, a name to a rule or law, right? And so if we did play this out and someone did come around, if we're talking about legal proceedings, again, all this is falling kind of on the manager of what they did and didn't do. I'm, I'm just wondering other layers of sort of accountability. I mean, you would need to come, if the consent decree or whatever it was called, labeled, what was it called, a consent?
It's a, basically a consent, it's basically a consent agreement between them.
Okay, so if that was made, I mean, ultimately, you would need to bring that consent decree to us to approve, or you would just?
No.
Unilaterally?
I don't think Tom's taking it to his council to be approved.
It's strictly with the manager, with the idea, again, it's a corrective action plan so that they don't get to ten. When we get to ten, I mean, it's removing, i- if the, the ability to remove somebody's rental housing permit for points starts going into that appeals board.
Okay. Yeah, I hope my concern is, probably not as clear, but i- i- it's interesting having the manager create a corrective action plan with a resident without the, at least the board's sort of like input into that. And it's more protective of you as the manager, um, and us being accountable as opposed to, you know... Yeah, I don't know, this, this makes sense. Am I barking up a tree? I shouldn't be barking up...
Well, I am familiar with the borough's plan, uh, I actually serve as a solicitor for the rental housing board in the borough. So I've been involved in those hearings when it has gone to, and it, and I think it's better suited to be a board of your residents, especially in light of the complaints that you've had. And they have a very good rental housing board, I've only had two or three, it's not a lot. And of course, they have the blessing of having most of the fraternities, which end up being the folks who get into that. But I know the manager has not had an issue working out those, uh, agreements with the property owner, because typically, thinking this through now, you look at your five points, if it's, if it's, you know, a Walt issue, you're talking to Walt. If it's a police issue or a zoning enforcement issue, you're talking to them. So when the manager sits down with the folks, they're saying, look, I've talked to the staff, I've talked to the personnel, I know what the issues are, how are we gonna fix this? Um, you know, how are you gonna make sure you're getting your sidewalks cleaned? I mean, I, I think if you look at the borough's numbers, and, and actually, their numbers are online. I think you can look up properties and see their points, and it's largely noise, which will not surprise many of you, which means the police are involved, some kinda, it's, it's trash.
Red solo cups.
Part, yeah, red solo cups.
The red solo cup.
Trash. And then occasionally, they have issues with things like snow removal, but you will find it's more related to party activities, quite frankly. And, and I would just add to the board, I think, I mean, obviously, their landlord's probably even in the room, but I think if, if there are landlords that will see this and they're already renting in the borough State College, they're gonna put it right in their lease. Look, I get a rental housing violation, it's gonna jeopardize your lease, uh, your ability to stay as a tenant. So they really do ride folks particularly hard, and again, I'll say this, I think that's why in the borough, their large issues are larger group properties like, um, fraternities as opposed to, say, downtown apartment buildings, right? They're not, they're just not, it's not happening because they're managing it better.
Yeah, one of the members of the Planning Commission is actually a property management, uh, person, and she mentioned that because of the point system in the borough, they don't have a lot of the problems with their rental properties, because they understand when they're renting them out, what needs to happen in terms of the points, and they make sure that people aren't accruing them.
If, like, was asked, and the Planning Commission could be, now here's the board, at our meetings, the members of the public who were in this market with the short-term rentals actually are requesting this. Um, they saw a, an even playing field, and also, uh, their comments were, you know, we have, uh, a reputation that we're at, gonna market to make. So we can't afford to have our place looking forward to here getting complaints. So I, I'm sensing you probably won't get a lot once you have guidelines replaced.
Got it. And I'm aware of the aversion to short-term rent, some of the aversion to short-term rentals, especially in Patent Township. Um, nuisance calls or violation, or nuisance complaints, I guess, against some of these short-term rentals, how do we, factor that into the equation? So if I'm, I don't want the short-term rental here, so I'm just gonna keep calling because
Right.
I'm just, just gonna call.
And I think that's gonna be at the point where when, if they're calling the police, if they're calling us, whatever, we're gonna have to do some education to that resident, that we're specifically trying to address actual issues, we're not specifically addressing just because you don't like the short-term rental that's next, next to you. We can't control who buys any house next to anybody in the township, but, you know, uh, some of the folks that I've talked to that live here and live in Park Forest in particular, their concerns are, some of them are, oh my goodness, the short-term rental, they don't do X, but some of it is, I don't know who my neighbor is, 'cause my neighbor doesn't live here. What we can't address, I don't know who your neighbor is, 'cause your neighbor doesn't live here, but we can start to address the, the things that make living in a neighborhood not comfortable.
Okay. All right. Thanks for entertaining me. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Um, well, I'll take a, uh, motion, uh, to set a public hearing and possible adoption, uh, of this.
So moved.
Second.
Regulation. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? All right, uh, home occupation regulations.
So this is an interesting one. Uh, we've had on our books since nineteen eighty-six, a definition for a home occupation. And a lot has changed in the world since nineteen eighty-six, in particular, since twenty-twenty. Um, so Nicole has done some considerable research on home-based businesses throughout the center region and also with some state regulations. Um, the state in two thousand and two actually created a no-impact home-based business. So that's basically where you're working out of your, uh, home, no one's coming into your home. You, no one knows that you're actually operating a business out of your home, because you don't have any clients coming in, you don't have any traffic. And then we're also, Nicole also found a low-impact business, and so that would be someone that has one employee that's having a little bit of traffic into the house. But again, from the outside, it's intended that no one knows that you're running said business in the house. Um, so when we put these regulations together, we were trying, again, to protect our residential zoning districts, our residential neighborhoods with these. Uh, we do have some businesses now, you've heard from one of the, uh, residents who's having a concern with a business in Park Forest, a home-based business. Um, and so we were trying to look at what businesses caused the most concern. Those are businesses that have significant amounts of noise, equipment, other things. So, um, we crafted these regulations, we decided under the low-impact business that we were gonna, um, prohibit specifically lawn care businesses, tree care services, and motor vehicle repair services, because those really are not suited, the office side of those businesses perhaps are suited for a home-based business, but the actual running of those businesses with equipment, trucks, employees, that kinda thing, that's not really suited. The rest of it, the regulations, um, we met with Betsy today and kind of talked about, through a couple of things about noise ordinance, referencing that, because we do have our noise ordinance. Um, also talking about where you can store some things, and you can't store anything that's over your allowable square footage of your property or outside of the property. And also looking at, um, just some things that we're gonna do, because we're gonna have everybody who has a home-based business now, a low-impact business, will have to get a permit from us. And we do know of some businesses that will not be allowed to continue, because again, they're under the prohibited class, so we wanna make sure we're doing some outreach to those property owners as well, so they're aware of what's coming and, and those folks have a time to make a, a transition out of being a home-based business. So, um, we wanted to put this for you today to look at, talk about, it has to go to CRPC, Jenna told me that, uh, tonight, I wasn't aware of that, to be adopted, so we couldn't adopt it before the June eighteenth meeting anyway, but, uh, see how you feel about it, see if you have any questions on what Nicole... Nicole did a great job, she did a lot of research on what she's come up with for this.
I'll first, uh, take a motion to prepare a draft ordinance for public hearing, possible adoption at the May eighteenth.
I'll correct that, it'd be the June eighteenth meeting.
Uh, June eighteenth, uh, meeting.
So moved. So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Okay. Questions, comments?
Good idea to be on top of this.
Well, and I will say, there's, since the pandemic, there's a lot more people that are operating small cottage businesses and other things out of their homes. And that's why I think a lot of people in the center region have updated regulations since then, because our regulations were written at a time when these were different kinds of businesses.
Okay. No other questions, comments? All right, uh, all of those... All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion passes. Uh, temporary use permit for Walmart.
Uh, Walmart does this every year, they get a temporary use permit for fifteen storage containers that they use during their back-to-college event. The containers start to arrive in June, and they will be picked up by the end of September. Uh, we have not, we've always put conditions on that, which they're listed in your agenda item, and we have not, I don't think, had any issues with the Walmart back-to-school containers.
Got it. I'll take a motion, uh, to approve temporary use permit for Walmart.
So moved.
On second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Uh, Park Forest United Methodist Church re-plot.
So this is where I'm gonna tag Jenna in. She's on Zoom, because she's actually out of the area.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me?
Yay, Jenna.
All right, great. Uh, so providing the agenda's Park Forest Village United Methodist Church re-plot slash lot addition. While I get my PowerPoint together, uh, to share. Let's see. Can everyone see the PowerPoint?
Yes, we can see it.
Awesome. Okay. So essentially, what is occurring here at the corner, um, two tax parcels essentially, this is in your low-density residential zoning district, and it involves reconfiguring three existing tracts into two lots. So I do wanna take the moment, um, just to explain the difference between a tract and a lot. So a tract is a surveyed portion of land which may not yet be formally subdivided or eligible for development, while a lot, or as you will hear me say, tax parcel, um, it is legally established, and it meets local ordinances and our standards for development or use. So to make this, uh, quite simple, if you, uh, look at the, um, plan in front of you in the presentation, those red dotted lines, those were the tracts that are being described within the deed.
Jenna, you're, uh, you're not advancing your PowerPoint.
Oh, man. That's unfortunate. Let's see. That's odd. Maybe if I just don't go into presenter mode, it'll help me. Where's God stay? Can you see my screen now?
Yes, we can see the plan now, yep.
So essentially, what's happening here is these red dotted lines are the tracts that are described within the deed. And they're gonna be removed, and you're gonna be left with two parcels here, one with the church and the parking lot, and the other one with the single-family home. Uh, currently, these two lots comply with your ordinances for the R2 zoning district. They both have access established here. Um, and staff has reviewed, um, the plan. We have no additional comments, uh, just pending, um, the administrative comments on signatures and whatnot for this plan. So I'm happy to answer any questions. It was a very drawn-out plan for, quite frankly, just removing two of these red line tracks to create these two separate parcels. But it's ideally to make it easier for the church, um, because those tracks and these lines are going through the middle of their property, and they're just trying to clean it up.
Uh, any questions, comments? All right, there's a motion on the floor. Uh, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I don't think you made a motion.
Oh.
So moved?
All right, I'll, I'll entertain a motion. Yeah, I'll entertain a motion to approve Park Forest United Methodist Church re-plot lot addition plan.
So Elliott.
Elliott made the motion. And Pam seconded it.
Got it. Uh, discussions. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Thanks, Jenna. Uh, Patton Crossing Phase 2B Kava Restaurant.
All right. This is also me. So providing the agenda's Patton Crossing Phase 2B Kava Restaurant Final Land Development Plan. This is for 1752 North Atherton Street. Uh, you are fairly familiar with this development. Uh, this was part of the conditional use, um, that the board heard earlier this year for the drive-through. So this is in your planned commercial and mixed-use overlay. Uh, the proposal is about 2,500-square-foot restaurant with associated infrastructure. So this is part of that Patton Crossing master plan, and we are specifically looking at this area that's highlighted in red. Please let me know if my presentation is not moving forward. Um, so the area in question is highlighted in red. It's roughly a little over three acres in size. And what we're looking at here is the proposed development, um, in front of you. They did, um, hear the concerns from planning commission, as well as the board, on the connection here, um, with the drive-through exit, and bumping this out a little bit, so we wouldn't have as many conflicts with the handicap parking here, as well as installing a stop sign at the exit for the drive-through. Um, after the conditional use has been approved, we did receive an updated plan. So there is a letter, um, provided by Nicole of all our outstanding comments, and it was really since the conditional use hearing, um, including a note on the plan, that the conditional use was approved by the board, um, and administrative in nature of the outstanding comments. I'm happy to answer any questions on this plan as well.
All right, I'll, uh, first entertain a motion, uh, to approve Patton Crossing Phase 2B Kava Restaurant Plan, subject to completion of all items, noted in staff's memorandum.
So moved?
Second.
Questions, comments? All right. Uh, there's been a lot of discussion on this, so, uh, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any, any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. All right, uh, the Grayswoods Planned Community.
All right, also me. So providing the agenda is the Grayswoods Planned Community, Grays Point Neighborhood, Phase 7, Section B, Final Subdivision Land Development Plan. So this property is approximately 174 acres. We're looking at a little portion of the, um, remaining portion of this PRD. Um, it's zoned planned community. The plan proposes the construction of 15 single-family homes, common open space lot, and the dedication of a public street, which is Phoebe Road, to Patton Township. I will share what this plan will be looking like. All right. Let me know if you cannot see this, um, but as you can see, these are the 15, uh, single-family homes, the open space lots, as well as the new extension of Phoebe Road here into a cul-de-sac. There will be, uh, street tree plantings, as well as sidewalks, to match the existing neighborhood character of the earlier phases of this development. The lots are ranging anywhere from point one to point two acres, and the size of the homes will essentially mimic what's already been built in Phase 7A of this plan. So I'm happy to answer any questions as well, uh, similar to the last two plans. All outstanding comments are administrative in nature.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve Grayswoods Planned Community, Grays Point Neighborhood, Phase 7B Division and Land Development Plan.
So moved? I'll second.
Any questions, comments?
I just wanna thank Lance King for his choice of trees, the native trees. Beat me to it, just for the record.
All right. Uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Uh, administration, professional contract for road crew training and evaluation.
So as you are aware, our road superintendent has announced his intention to retire in September after 42 years of service to the township. Uh, I have decided that the best way to fill that position is to go with an internal candidate. Um, so I'm also gonna use this as an opportunity to evaluate our current road crew and kind of how we're functioning, because I think there's some ways we can optimize our service delivery. So I reached out to Jason Daly from Daly Operation Consulting to get a proposal, uh, for some technical assistance to move forward with the road crew. Mr. Daly was the former Public Works Director in Cranberry Township, Butler County. He's also been an interim manager, and he's a municipal consultant all over the state of Pennsylvania. So he's proposing a not-to-exceed fee of $13,500 to assist with evaluating the road crew, uh, to provide suggestions for changes that could optimize the department, and to train the crew leaders on the functions of what a road crew, road superintendent does. And he's also, um, gonna develop an interview process and a metric that we can use to evaluate the candidates, uh, that'll be fair to everybody that's applying for the position. So if you're comfortable with the recommendation, I'd like to move forward with, um, hiring Mr. Daly to come in. He'll actually physically come in two days to be here, and then, uh, assist in other ways as well.
I'll entertain a motion as listed in agenda.
So moved? Second.
Uh, any discussions? Supervisor Abrams.
Just a question. Did we contact any of the residents or, uh, people in charge in Cranberry Township and make sure that, that they were happy with the person's recommendations?
Oh, yeah, actually, uh, Mr. Daly, uh, is pretty well-respected within our profession, and I know the manager in Cranberry Township had a good relationship with him as well.
Excellent.
Anything else? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Uh, comprehensive plan update, future land use map.
So CRPA did the presentation to the general forum about the proposed three-phase approach to updating the future land use map. Um, and they're asking, you can read what the future land use map is in your agenda, but they're asking how involved the elected officials wanna be with the formation of the map. Their options are for you to have a joint meeting with our planning commission, for you to have a separate meeting, for you to rely on your Lucy representative, which I believe is Supervisor Whitman, or some other, uh, combination. So they're just looking for some direction.
Uh, we have some asks there. Um, joint meeting with planning commission, separate meeting, rely on Lucy representative, or other. What's the board's desire? Supervisor Rob?
Was that one to meet with, uh, Representative?
Yeah, Betsy could be your representative on that.
Okay. So I, I don't mind doing it. I was gonna say, if it wasn't me, because I love those kind of stuff, that I would recommend that we'd have a joint meeting with the planning commission. But since it is me, I'm delighted to do it. Um, yeah.
I, I would prefer a joint meeting with planning commission. Uh, could they come on our schedule?
Yes, we can do that. We could do that over the summer. That seems like a good summer activity.
Uh, is the board in favor of that?
It's, yep. Perfect.
We want to be an informed body. All right. Uh, so we will, um, plan a joint meeting with the planning commission to go over this. All right, moving on, uh, consent agenda. Um, a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Manager's report.
So I just wanna touch on the storm, uh, for two things. First of all, I want to give a huge shout-out to both our public works crew and our police department, who were in just all night that night that the storm happened. Um, I got a text from Tyler, kind of giving me the update. We were actually here for a CCATO meeting, which, fun fact, first time I ever had to stop a meeting for a storm. That was something. Um, but they, the road crew, the police department, they were out all night chasing calls, um, and did just a phenomenal job. And I, I couldn't be more happy with the work that both departments did through the storm. Um, the road crew then handled all the cleanup from the event, and it's been something. Uh, we had 88% of our customers in the, uh, Patton Township did not have power, and they didn't have power for a stretch of days. Uh, we had people that were on wells. We relied on State College Borough Water Authority for the filling station, which was over at the Alpha Fire, uh, station here, and people used that. People were coming into our building here to charge their devices. They were also using College Township, but we had folks that were here for hours, which was great to see. Um, after we've kind of finished the cleanup, I've been talking with the road crew about what we need to do to assess, to make sure we're better prepared, because this is not gonna be the last storm we have that's like that. Um, so a couple of things we've done. We have traffic signals that their power surge protectors have died, and that they're, you know, 15 years old. So we're gonna spend about $9,000 replacing the backup surge protectors on our oldest traffic signals, and we'll complete the, there's 11. We'll complete the rest of them in 2026. We've also been, uh, we have these weird pockets, not weird, but these little pockets of open space throughout the township that were deeded to us a long time ago, that have trees on them. So we've been pooling the trees that have come down. Some of them have come down on, on folks' fences and other pieces of their property. But we're also sending two members of our road crew, who are very interested in learning about how to maintain trees. So we're gonna send them to a climbing class in Redding, uh, in July, so they can learn about pruning and maintaining trees and how to safely do that. Uh, the person who teaches the class is actually a member of our open space committee, and when I reached out to him to say, hey, I wanna make sure this is the right class, Jim said, hey, that's the right class for them to take, and I would be happy to come in and do a whole session for anybody in the, anybody from the public works crews in the center region, on how to identify a hazardous tree. So there's some opportunities. I think there's some things we need to do to make sure that we're, you know, on top of some of these dead and dying trees, and focus on some of this over the next couple of years to, um, take care of it. On the regional side, um, Sutan is on our, the Emergency Management Council. We did have an email chain going sort of throughout the storm to assess issues that we were having. As you know, I'm the chair of the Emergency Management Council. One of the things I'm gonna recommend, I talked to Ben about this last evening, and I'm gonna reach out to Jonathan and Sean Kaufman. I think we should do an after-action review of the storm, which, an after-action is a very prescribed process. It's intended for the first responders and the people that were dealing with the storm, to really assess kind of how things went, what things could be changed. And then at the Emergency Management Council level, the conversation we need to have is, we should have activated the EOC. We did not. We should have talked more about the emergency declaration, and we should have a process for those things in place. And then there was a discussion because of our trash program, uh, with how do we handle with folks having so much food that they had to throw out. It ended up being $696 for the extra bags that the cog paid for, but we need a policy of how we handle these things moving forward. So I think there's a lot of things we can learn. One of the biggest pieces, too, that we sort of need to get back to telling our residents and educating them on, years ago, we were always taught, you need to be able to rely on yourself for 72 hours. And local governments were told that. We were told, you need to be able to rely on yourself for 72 hours. So I would like to see us pick up that message, message again, and also find a way, because when your phone doesn't work, you have trouble finding the information you need. So find a way, we did eons ago, like 2008, we put together a booklet that we mailed out, we actually printed it on newsprint, and we mailed it out to everybody in the center region, and it had the phone number for every police department and every township building. And it said, this is what happens in a flood, and this is what happens in a winter storm, and these are how to deal with a power outage. We need to pull that booklet out and update it, and we need to get that into people's hands. And we need to get people to know, and we need to talk about how do you store a medicine, that, a critical medicine that has to be refrigerated? Are there places we can put into our plan that folks can go? And look at that plan and update it, because I talked to a resident, and I said to her, you know, for years, we had snow. Like that, that's always been our big climate issue. It's always been snow. And now it's less snow, and it's more of these kind of storms. And so we need to make sure we're prepared for all of these, and that we're working toward making our, sure that our residents are prepared as well, and they're self-sufficient for those 72 hours. Because I don't think this is gonna be the last storm that we have like this. But I want you to know that these conversations are starting, um, at the regional level, and that they're gonna continue, and we're gonna try to make sure that when this happens again, we're even more prepared. Elliot.
The phone thing is important, because it used to be, if you had landlines, uh, that was a backup and, and, but we don't have those anymore in most areas. And so your phone is not likely to be very helpful.
Yeah, and like, I grew up, I lived through Three Mile Island. Maybe that's why I am the way I am. But where I grew up, it was in the phone book, like, what to do in an emergency, and you just pulled out the phone book, and it said, when the Three Mile Island siren goes off, if it's an actual disaster, it sounds like this, and your kids will be sent to this place to be reunified, all this stuff. Obviously, we don't have phone books really anymore. It's not a thing. But we need to find a way that people have something, that they don't rely on this. I mean, I didn't have power out at my house. I didn't have cell coverage, so I would drive in and sit here, where I would sit at the sheets at night, so I could get- get text messages and emails so I knew what was going on. But we have to find a way to kind of bridge that digital gap.
Supervisor Whitman.
Yeah.
It's true.
Yeah, absolutely. And a lot of, I think preventative care in this. One concrete example for us, I randomly called somebody about something totally not related to the storm and I said, oh yes, you know, everybody said, yeah, so how's the weather? How's your electricity? Right? I said, our electricity is out. She says, well, we happen to have a generator, which is actually a big battery now. Do you want to borrow it? Okay. So the idea of a generator or, people call it generators, actually big battery now, they're also called generators. We just need to have constant conversations about something like that. Get a generator, get into a generator network. And one way of doing that, I think it's obviously social media, so we'll bring Sophie into the, into the mix, but also there's electronic signs that we have. You get two or three words, consider generator network, storm for storm safety, whatever. And we need to be doing it now, we need to be doing it regularly, because this is going to be a regular occurrence. The formation that caused our storm was an omega formation. Am I right Elliot? That's what they were calling it in the papers.
The name of the storm?
Duratio.
What?
Duratio.
Oh, Durego, Duratio.
Basically, the trees, it's like being in a bowling alley and the trees are the pins.
Yeah, and everything's coming towards you. But it's also, there's, I also have heard an omega formation and of course, there's an atmospheric river. Well, there's one going on right now, south of us. So this is not going to be, this is not a one-off. And I really want to thank what the township did. I was one of the ones who was elbow to elbow at Wegmans Cafe the very first day that we had no power and I thought, wow, what a good idea. Everybody else thought it was a good idea. And then I learned that the township had this opening. We use, we use this. So that's the kind of information also that we need to get out ahead of time.
Yes.
Power out, come to the township and have it on the electronic sign if there's any that have electricity.
Yeah, one of the things we've discovered over the years, so back in 2009, we had an early season snowstorm. It was the homecoming weekend for Penn State football. And it was pretty destructive and there were a lot of people that were without power because we still had leaves on the trees, which is the worst time to get snow. So we opened up shelters, because we had run around and said, oh my gosh, we have to have shelters. And we found shelters and then we did all these shelters agreements and our building is a shelter as well. What we've found in the ensuing years is that folks really less want to come to a shelter, because they don't want to spend the night and whatever. They more want to have a place to charge their device and be able to contact people and do work. They also need a shower. We had folks that came in and said, I really need a shower. Well, the State College Y was on a generator and they weren't letting people use the Y because of that. So we've talked about, and the Y has been a wonderful partner to us, do we have some agreement that says you can use any of their facilities? And again, we had power here. Ferguson did not have power, State College did not have power, they were on their generators. So they weren't going to let people come charge because they had to do, be able to do their work. Had we been on our generator, we wouldn't have been open for people to charge. But being able to pick up the phone, we had a text message going and I'm like, Adam, you have power, you're opening up. Are you opening up? I'm opening up. Oh, Centris, you can't. Okay, Tom, you can't, but we can. And having those networks in place ahead of time, I think would be a big help as well.
And, and having the public know that.
And that's the piece, we have to find a way to get this to the public so that they physically have a piece of paper that says, this is what happens, so that they're not dependent upon their phone.
Or you have to use the media. There was someone from West Penn Power that went to the forever stations and I heard them, because I was in my office where I had power. So yeah, I think having a plan, and I wouldn't just look at this storm. You've had three storms in a row. You had an airport that's three times had to be on generator power.
Yep.
And, you know, to you as elected officials, I will say, I said this to the Ferguson board, I understand what Amy and her crew is doing, but you cannot let your legislators off the hook with the PUC. There has to be better maintenance of trees along lines. I called 911, the non-emergency number, because there was a line across 550 that it, that a truck clipped.
Yeah.
And we don't have cell service. And my point is, they're out doing it now, you saw the article in the paper, but you can't let them off the hook. And I think the community should consider some kind of training for our residents about how to assess their own trees.
Yes, yeah, I think that's.
I mean, it's great to do it for public works, but, you know, I bet when you, when all the wash comes out here, 50 or 60% of the trees were on private property.
Yeah.
You're not going to be able to go in and make those changes. And those power lines have to be, and, and you've got residents, and I understand, I know the folks that come in real hot, but you've got residents in neighborhoods that don't have power above ground. So their frustration is, our neighborhood has done it the way it should be done, but because the lines getting to us are not there. And, and I know there are a couple of residents that are going to try to start mapping power lines to know why they're out of power, but somebody a half a mile away isn't, because it doesn't always make sense.
Yeah, and I think the other thing, going back to Betsy's point about the generators, so this was a, and back in Harris Township in 2017, we had a pretty bad storm and it affected just pretty much Harris Township. So my next door neighbor had a generator and he came and knocked on the door and said, hey, I'm going to hook you in, you'll have your refrigerator, a light, and that's it. And I was like, that's all I need. I saved all my food. If we could get residents to start to talk to their neighbors and then maybe it's not Betsy who has a generator, but Susan has a generator that she can hook Betsy into. And that way, maybe the resident that doesn't have the means or doesn't understand or want to own a generator, has a neighbor that they can rely on, that can help them. I mean, I think that's the, that's the other part of this resilience, right, is you have to know kind of the people around you to help you take care of some of this. Because in the middle of that storm, our police department's triaging calls, our public works guys are triaging calls. I have a friend who lives in Park Forest and on Devonshire, he had a tree down and he said, we went, oh, trees blocking most of the road, we're just going to get our chainsaws. And he goes, your public works crew pulled up, one of the police officers pulled up and said, okay. And then the public works guys pulled up and said, cool, we've got tons of other trees to take care of. And they took off. So just building that sense of you have to kind of fend for yourself in some of this, because we've got to triage what we have coming in.
Yeah. I just want to add to that. I talked to somebody who lives out in the Aaron'sburg, actually it might have been Shelley Mottow, when we were talking about the traction. She said, out in the Aaron'sburg area, because there are fewer people, everybody seems to know everybody. And so when power goes out, everybody calls, at least one or two people, to find out if they need a generator, if they have power. So it's done on a regular basis. So I think that building community is key. How we go about doing it is the challenge, it's a creative challenge. Also, I love the idea of training people about the trees. When you mentioned that, I was going to raise my hand and say, I would like to be trained for, for many reasons. But I think you can't have too many people educated on how or when they need to preemptively call a tree person.
Right.
And come in and have that tree taken care of.
Supervisor, Chesky.
I just, I just wanted to add with community education, because I lived in Florida for several years and after hurricane, a lot of the deaths were from generators. So we should have public education on how to use it.
Yep.
Yes, please. Come on up.
This is great conversation and really appreciate it. I live in an apartment and there are many apartments in the area and I've debated about, you know, getting a battery generator kind of thing, but it would be nice to have some guidance on this. I, I just recognize, because there are some neighbors who had the refrigeration issue with medicines and fortunately, we had ice packs and we were able to help out, but it is an issue. So thank you for talking about it, but don't forget about apartments too.
Oh yeah.
Supervisor Abrams.
Well, over at the Village of Penn State, they actually did a postmortem on what happened with the storm. Staff stayed longer and many didn't ever go home during the whole thing. But still, there were people stuck in elevators and so they had to go through the rules of how to get people out of the elevators. And other people are unable to walk up and down steps and the hall, some of the hallways became dark and they also found that a number of the emergency lights didn't come on. So inventory is being taken, all of that. But another thing is with the utilities, I don't think it's satisfactory for the utility to come on and say that it's 10:00 AM, there are so, so many people, thousand out of power and we're going to have another update at 6:00 PM or something. It's got to be, got to be faster than that. And I think it's, it's actually more likely that you'll get an ad from your utility wanting you to buy some home protection thing than actually useful information about the actual storm. And so when you were talking about the PUC, somebody regulates how they're supposed to take care of the trees and to make sure that they do that regularly and so they're ready for a storm.
So.
Another thing that finally, with this storm, it affected so many people that the normal thing is they bring crews in from other places. But there weren't other places this time, because they were having the bad, the bad storms themselves. The thing moved from Pittsburgh to here in about an hour and a half. So when you have hundreds of thousands of people without power, where are these spare people coming from?
So one of the things the managers discussed at our breakfast this morning, eons ago, Bollesburg used to have really bad power. Like the power went off every hour on the hour, just blipped. And so we actually got the PUC to come up, because there's a Center County connection on the PUC board. And he pushed and West Penn had a hearing and then at the hearing, they had action items they went over with the residents and it was, filled the fire hall and then they worked on it and the power got better. So I said this morning, I said, I think we might be at the point where we need to see if we can work into a conversation, because not just the trees, but also we don't have great contacts. We used to have a great local government contact. She retired, moved away. The guy that we had for the first storm this year is no longer there. We have a new contact. And Jonathan was pulling his hair out during the storm, because the contact at West Penn Now was going, you need to put in a ticket, you need to call the call center. Jonathan's like, I don't have time to call the call center. I need you to take care of this problem over here. I'm not calling in some trivial thing. So we maybe need to have, and what Betsy said about the legislature too, we might need to reach out to the Center County contact who's still on the PUC board and have some kind of a hearing and hold their feet to the fire. Because I'll tell you, after we did it in Bollesburg, this was like in 2012, they came up, they talked, they listened, and people filled the fire hall and screamed at them. They listened and then they went out and they started making all the upgrades and all the power issues went away. And then they did after the storm in 2017, when we again had a ton of power outages and trees down and all kinds of things, they came in and then over the next four years, they addressed a lot of these trees. They did some aggressive tree work through the township. So we need to get them to pay that attention to everybody as a whole, not just in the center region, but in Center County now, because the storm impacted just about everybody.
Can you follow up on that?
Yes, well, the managers have, have made that an action item for us to look into.
Yeah, thank you for that.
One of the concerns I had, want clarity on is, because I know for me, there was a lot of felled trees in my area and some residents had come out with chainsaws. I helped in that process too. My concern though was for the safety of the residents doing that. And I know you relayed a situation where I guess utilities or police came upon in Devonshire or something like that and residents were doing things, you know, like, all right, cool, I've got to go to some other place. Like just liability, should a resident get injured doing something like that? What, what does that?
Well, and I think the other piece of that too, is making sure that residents know if there's a power line, you shouldn't be touching anything. And even if you don't know if it's a power line, it could be some other kind of line, shouldn't touch it.
You shouldn't even get close to it.
Or touch any.
The videos of people close to those lines over on 26 are really not good.
Yeah.
I think one of the things that should be said to West Penn Power and the other affiliates is that we need to go back to basic electric training. Most of the people sitting at this table probably know that, but a lot of people don't understand that it's not just the power line. It can one arc to you and if it is connected to anything else, like it's sitting in water and you step in the water, you have just grounded that line. They don't understand the basics of a ground. So I think that has to be part of the training too, for, back to your safety issue. I don't think it's a problem if they come out and it's not a power line and they're cutting up a tree on the road. I think, well, that happens all over Pennsylvania all the time. So I don't think that's a problem from a liability perspective, but where it does become a problem is if we know there's a downed power line and we're not somehow keeping people from getting to it. Now, as the chief just pointed out, you had to close Fox Hill Road for what, three or four days? And you had people going around barricades. So we also need to remind people, which we don't have right now, but if we were in Maryland right now, this would be the message, don't go around the barricade when it says the road's flooded, right? Because that's what people do and bad things happen. So I think there's a lot of education that can come out of this. I'm glad the managers are, are working that way. I know Amy told me earlier, she's also working with the county, because I think there really needs to be a plan and communication among all the players, so that when a road is closed, like for example, Fox Hill Road was part Patent Township, part State Police. Who's on the other side to make sure that you've got traffic stopped? Because I've listened to the call center calls and they're calling out, but they're sitting in a room trying to, no pun intended, direct traffic and they're relying on people to come back and do what they need to do. And you have to assume that the traveling public is not going to think smart.
And there's, there's thinking, or I should say, there's, there's brain memory and there's muscle memory. And what we all know up here, we don't always know what we call out of the context of how you learned it. So in the classroom, out of the classroom. And speaking of just educating in general, where redundancy is always our friend. I'm thinking of the one outreach that we do consistently, and I'm looking at the chief, because I know officers go to the schools and talk about safety. They, if you could, if I might suggest, they could add something about storm safety, probably has not been talked about. We all learn how to stop, drop and.
Roll.
Roll, right? So I rest my case. We learned that, I learned that in elementary school, right? So anyways, just, just a thought. Something that we can do right now, maybe.
That's an interesting proposal, because it's, we, we've talked about how do we get our citizens engaged? And we can do mailers and other things, but that seems to not do the trick. But if we're target, not targeting, if we talk with children, who will then relay that information back to caregivers, that might provide a better reach.
In fact, that's, just thinking ahead, that it might be actually a great table to do at the next year's safety fair.
And so interestingly enough, I don't know if you're aware, but West Penn Power has a mobile display, they have a trailer that talks about safety around power lines. And it actually, it's a fantastic display they actually had here years ago. I've tried to get that to come to the safety fair every single year, because I think it's a fantastic resource for adults and kids. But it shows, you know, if, if you touch a power line, what's going to happen if you're grounded and, you know. So it's a fantastic resource, so I, we do always try to get that to come. Fortunately, typically in the fall, there was hunting issues, all their staff was off on vacation for hunting season. I did try to reach out again, we're struggling now to have a contact that's reliable with West Penn to, to make that connection, to get to request it. I know I used to talk to Jolene and she was fantastic.
Oh, Jolene, yeah.
But so, yeah, that's something that, education, I agree, we can talk to the SRO. We are, I must say, limited, but the school district sometimes is not picky, but they want to, you know, kind of know what curriculum he's going to be teaching. So it's something we can approach with the school district and say, hey, is something they'd be interested in? I don't know if our SRO is the most appropriate person to talk about like power line safety or things like that. So maybe we can come up with a collaboration with West Penn or, you know, something else to bring him in and have an expert there to discuss that.
Or even, or even find out a way to duplicate the education material that West Penn Power has, so that more people have it locally. Because I think we're going to have more need for it going forward.
Or to just make it more comprehensive than just power lines.
Yeah, well, true. I mean, it should be everything. I mean, I go back to, we used to practice for nuclear disaster when I was growing up.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I, I don't think getting under my desk was gonna help me, but that's what we did. So, we need to get back to, I don't know what they're doing in schools these days, but I think that's a good point, to go start with students, but also, we need to get out to HO Ways, and to the village, and to other folks, and just start discussing this, and talking about this, and, and kind of beating the message, so people understand.
Supervisor Rob?
Thank you. Being on the Public Safety Committee for COG, I just recently went to the PSAT conference and attended the Emergency Management, and they're like, one of the things they said, everybody needs to be on the same page, you know, not one entity here, one entity here, one entity here, all of us need to be at the table, because some of the solutions were coming from individuals.
Yep.
One of the things, and I, I have to thank Betsy Dupree on, that was brought up, was education, constantly education. I got an education yesterday from my colleague, because of the incident of the young man in the car. We are taught, early on, elementary, junior high, about electrical lines, and what she, what, Nalini, Dr., uh.
Krishnakudi.
Krishnakudi explained to me that although we were, learnt that here, international students do not have the same education. So, they wouldn't know, you know, if the lines fell on your car, not to go open that door, you know, and they're finding out, talking to individuals are coming up, well, we didn't know that, we weren't taught that. We were taught that. We know it like the back of our hands. Other individuals do not. So, that education piece is critical, talking to, and I want to give what was relayed to us, that our commissioner, also I learned last night, Michael Steffen from Penn State, were talking to the state to get us help during that time.
Yeah, Mark Higgins too.
You know, Mark Higgins, our commissioner, and, and Michael from the Penn State Governor's Office, that they weren't going to give us help for two weeks. Think about that, two weeks without help. So, educating, I, I thank you, Amy, for 72 hours preparation. We've got to get that information out to our residents, being prepared. The other thing is word of mouth. I'm called Mama Bear for a reason. I must have called everybody on my list, and those that didn't, and thankfully, your neighbor, my neighbor happens to be a good friend of the chair, she came over to check on me, knowing I'm a senior, I can take that. But through word of mouth, I'm checking on my neighbor I haven't seen. I don't, some of our neighbors never talk to me. Are you okay? Do you have power? Picking up the phone when I had charge to call, well, we have individuals that have medical issues, insulin, coolers, I didn't know about the, um, the ice packs. If you have a cooler, ice. People were going and getting ice to help their neighbors. So, it, it's called a community for a reason. We've got to continue to look out for each other, and be safe in doing so, you know, and be patient. West Penn is shorthanded, we all found that out, very shorthanded. So, if you call and got the message, continue to call, continue to let your neighbor know. Well, they haven't gotten here yet. When they get that call from the chair, my colleagues, they're like, wait a minute now, my phone, we got a whole list of coming from Park Forest, Ferguson. Well, wait a minute, they kept, wait a minute, they kept calling, day in, day out, people that didn't have power for four, four days. Let us know, don't be afraid to say, I haven't had, I haven't had power in four days. We have stations. We had charging station right here. I went on post, I mean, I went to, to, to Penn State to charge my phone, not knowing here, and seats, and through word of mouth, we knew. So, continue to talk to each other, whether you like them or not. In times of a crisis, I learnt that from Red Cross. You may not like me, but I guarantee you, in times of crisis, I will not, excuse me, can you help me? You might not like me for the color of my skin, you might not like me because who I am, but in a crisis, in a crisis, you don't see color, you don't see who I sleep with, you don't see, I wear blue hair, in a crisis, my family is in need, I need, and I guarantee you, the humanity will come through. So, we're here to help you, as a neighbor, as a friend, as a family member. Continue to pass that on, when we are in need, and even afterward, be a friend, and have humanity, because we all need each other. Thank you.
So, see now, I'm gonna need you to put some Hans Zimmer under, under that speech.
That was amazing.
Yeah. Thank you. Anything else?
I said enough.
Got it. All right, committee reports, anything that members wish to add to their reports? I did not actually attend the Human Resources Committee, I was unable to do that, so.
Mr. Chair, for Public Safety, we met yesterday, and to let all my colleagues know, they will be giving a proclamation for the YMCA because of the storm. They have chose to look at giving a letter to the Water Authority. We've also talked to, and I know Jonathan Briesley, EMS coordinator, we wanted to give him a letter, and we also wanted to give Fire Chief Sean Kaufman a letter because of the hard work that they did. If I can still make the recommendation to our board that we give Jonathan.
Yep.
Uh, who was it, the YMCA and the Water Authority did that, had the portable water station here, definitely them.
Yeah, I will get that drafted, I've been meaning to do that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to say a couple of notes from the Climate Action and Sustainability Committee. We, at first thought that maybe we could vote on whether the decision to pay for the, the extra two bags of trash, whether that was something that was in our purview, we found out that it wasn't. However, it generated a good conversation on options for the trash bags, and concern about having that food waste go into the trash, as opposed to into a, sorry, recycling or the, the, the organic food waste. So, I know that's another big step, and it's a sort of a minor thing in light of the emergency of the storm, but it did generate a lot of conversations, that was good. And I also want to note that, of course, we all know that Pam Adams now is no longer the Sustainability Director, she's head of planning at COG, so we are transitioning into a slightly new structure with the Climate Action Sustainability Committee. Pam Adams will be there, but a slightly different role, so, just that thought.
All right, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Third.
Needing adjourned. Thank you all.